All right, I'm going to call the special meeting on February 10th at order. Let's all stand for pledge of allegiance, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll dispense with the roll and just make note that everyone is present tonight. I'm going to get right into this because by the looks of this, it's going to take at least 20 minutes. This is a last thing for the purpose of we have some water plant improvements that we may or may not be doing and Fishbeck is here tonight. We've got some people from the water plant here tonight. So without any further ado, I'll let Warren kind of make a quick introduction and...
Sure.
...this thing moving.
Sure. Good evening, members of council. Again, in summer, we contracted with Fishbeck to produce a study of our plants. We looked at certain items that were identified by Eagle as concerns, as concerns, as well as our staff as concerns. And you'll hear me say this a lot, but our facility is 42 years old. Most of it is pretty much original. I like to tell people I have 40 years until I plan to retire. So my goal with this is to get another 40 years out of our water plants so that when I retire, the plant will still be here, you know, in one piece functioning. And there's a few different parts to this, you know, kind of talking about capital improvement backlog, catching things up, doing some improvements on dated equipment, as well as part of tonight I'll be talking about expanding our ability to produce water and implications about this thing called the four filter rule, which our engineers over there will get into much more than myself. With that, I'd like to, we've got Mark and John from Fishbeck. I was going to butcher your last name, so I'm sorry for that, but really the floor is yours, gentlemen. Thank you for being here tonight.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thanks for having us tonight. My name's John Williman and I'm here with Mark Parsley. We're with Fishbeck and we're going to present the study. Actually, Mark's going to present most of the study, but I'm going to kick things off. I'm kind of a second stringer here tonight. Dave Barrow was going to be here, but he had a death in the family, so I'm going to step in for Dave. I'm the department head of our water and wastewater engineering group and I've done a lot of work with water plants, not unlike your own. In fact, a plant very much in the same situation as yours on the west side of the state, Luddington, that was built without enough filters to meet the current standards and so forth. So very familiar with your situation. I did just want to just take a minute and introduce Fishbeck. I know many of you may know us and some may not, but we are an employee-owned firm or Michigan-born and bred. We've got about 14 offices now. We do have a couple in Ohio and one in Indiana, but we're headquartered in Grand Rapids. We have an office in McComb, actually, and we do work all over the state on water plants, including we've done a little bit of work in Marysville and we've done work at New Baltimore and a little bit of work at Mount Clemens. So we're certainly very familiar with the water source and a lot of the problems and circumstances that you are facing here. Again, we are an employee-owned company. We're about 220 shareholders out of our 450 employees and we're very proud of that. Go ahead, Mark. Thank you. Just real briefly, in terms of what we do, we're consultants and constructors and we have four divisions, architecture and engineering, which is all kinds of buildings for all types of industries and cities and municipalities. Our infrastructure group does a lot of highways and buried type of work. Our environmental group does a lot of permitting and other environmental types of projects and then we do have a construction group. So we're able to bring those folks in, actual constructors, when we do things like cost estimating on our engineering projects and we get some firsthand knowledge from folks that are out there building work and we have professional estimators onsite as well. So just a little bit about us and then I will hand it off to Mark. So thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right. So as I said, my name is Mark Parsley. I'm on the Fishbeck's water treatment team, specifically drinking water. I'm working a lot of conventional style plants, kind of like your guys' mostly on the west side of the state, so I was pretty excited to get to move over to this side and dig into some plants over here. So I heard 20 minutes, so I'm going to try to keep this high level and hopefully informal. So if you guys, and they, some of you probably looked at the report, if there's specific questions, you want to just cut me off and ask me something, feel free. It's not a big deal. So and I'll just briefly kind of, you guys, most of you guys know this, so you guys, like Warren said, you have a 40-plus-year-old plant and that's currently rated by Eagle at 3 million gallons per day. We'll talk a little bit about that as we get there. And to start the project off, when we kicked it off, myself and one of our senior electrical engineers came out and did a plant assessment, spent the day out here, kind of interviewed some of your staff at the plants and we agreed with what Eagle found in your sanitary survey. It's a well-maintained plant. It's in well-operating condition. Your staff does a really good job of keeping things operating and clean, so you should be proud of that. It's just to the point where it's old, the equipment gets old, it gets worn out and that's kind of was identified in the sanitary survey, which we agree with. So we'll step through some of these things that we found, but so the scope of the project, when we kicked it off, you know, we looked at what you guys wanted to do. There were six issues identified by Eagle in your sanitary survey as recommendations, things they recommended you guys to improve. Your staff had gone through and identified 17 of their own issues that they wanted us to evaluate and look at. So we did that. One of the things that we also did is, and we talked about this four filter rule, is maintaining your filtration capacity and I'll dig into a little bit of that too as we get towards the end of the presentation. And then afterwards, kind of as we got into it, Warren and Barry had us kind of look at what it would take to get the plant to a four MGD and we'll talk about how we got to that decision and what that looks like. So like I said, it was a pleasure working on this project. You have a really good staff. The outcome was just better just because of the involvement in your plant staff with Barry and Warren and just being able to get us information made it very easy to find things. I remember there was probably some weeks in there where I was sending Barry multiple emails a day asking for things and he would just turn around and hand it right over. So it made it a much better outcome in terms of the finished report. So I'll just briefly touch on these Eagle identified issues. You know, the first issue that they identified is your media is aging. It's original to the plant. They had noted some requirements to replace the media recently, so they were concerned with the loss of media. And as media ages, it degrades. It'll break up and you'll lose some of those fine material as you backwash your filters. So we evaluated what it would take to remove the existing media, removing it, replacing it with new. And then also in turn, we provided some costs in case at that point you wanted to make some upgrades and get the filters to a little bit better technology in terms of under drains and an air scour, which is a more efficient way to backwash your filters, can reduce your backwash rate, your volume and it gets a much better cleaning on your filters when you backwash. So the report kind of addresses that. We did evaluate just to make sure that there was nothing operationally that was causing you guys to lose media in terms of backwash rates and the pumps and that evaluation showed that the filters were designed well and you shouldn't be losing any media just based on your backwash operations. It's mostly, it's probably due to just the media aging and degrading and breaking down. So there's an evaluation and all of these steps we provided and I'll get to it at the end, a cost on what those improvements would take. Another item we did that was recommended by Eagle, they wanted us to, the city just wanted us to kind of have a discussion on a coagulant and evaluation of maybe differing coagulants and coagulant aids. I know there's some issue with, there's some perceived issue on the effectiveness of the coagulant based on the water quality. The plant's currently seeing some applied turbidity spikes. I think they were around .6 of what your applied, what the turbidity of the water. And turbidity, I mean, turbidity is essentially stuff in the water. That's how you measure how much stuff is in the water. So as you go process to process, you track how much you're cleaning the water. So there was some turbidity spikes before it got to the filters, higher turbidities than what we typically see in that process. So we wanted to evaluate a coagulant change. So we did, we evaluated your raw water quality and how that affects the effectiveness of your coagulant that you use, which is aluminum sulfate. Most people refer to it as alum. So what we did is we surveyed some other local water treatment plants. We looked at Port Huron, Marysville, Marine City, New Baltimore, Ira Township and just see what they use and the majority of them still use alum just because of the, it's the cheapest option and it's the most common option with conventional treatment plants. So just to kind of compare what you guys are doing with other local plants. We did look at some options and have a discussion of what you could do in terms of differing coagulation process. Some of those, we looked at adding a polymer, which could help, changing your coagulant to a different chemical or adjusting the pH. So there's a discussion on all those. We didn't do any jar testing. That's what Eagle would like to see. I think you had, the staff had procured a jar testing equipment. So these are some things that the plant can continue to test and look at, kind of using this as a guideline for different options they could use. One of the other, the next thing that Eagle identified in the sanitary survey is the capacity of your intake and the capacity of your raw water transmission main. And what they wanted to see is the staff to calculate the friction or we call it the C factor. And that's kind of a way that you can calculate what, how much flow you can get through those pipes. So what we did is we came up with a procedure and how the city can do that and an equation where you can use some basic pressure and flow measurements, plug those into an equation and then track that C factor so that now you can trend what that capacity of your pipe is. And then we put together some graphs here that when you calculate these different C factors and you can see there's C from 120 to 70, you can plot this on this graph and then see what C factor where you start to get in trouble for a capacity. So now it's something that...
Go ahead.
Okay. Now it's something that the city can use and trend that annually and that's something we've seen on other plants with Eagle is they're looking at capacities of these intake or different transmission mains and they wanted to see that data. So my guess is in the next sanitary survey you guys have, they'll probably follow up on this and look for that. So now you guys can start to trend that data.
Help me out here if I heard this wrong, okay, Mark?
Yeah.
So our media is not, media is not breaking down because of backwashing it?
Yeah, it just, it degrades as you age, so it'll, there'll be some, it'll break down in the fine material that is the material that will float up. So if it's, if the media is the right consistency and the right, you know, porosity size, that type of thing, that backwashing, you should never lose, theoretically, you should never lose any media while you backwash. But as the media breaks down, the composition changes and the characteristics change, so you have these fine material and that's the stuff that will...
That will backwash out.
That as you backwash, you'll lose it.
So we do in effect lose some media just because it broke down and got backwashed out?
Yes, yep, yep, yep. If you were, if you were to replace that media and it would be a sieved media, that's an engineered media that would come from the factory like that or a manufacturer and it's the right size and it doesn't have those fines, I mean, you'll, I don't anticipate you would lose media at that point because it's fresh media. It's not broken down.
It's a natural process over time that that's going to break down.
Yeah. It's not, you guys aren't breaking it down because of backwashing. It's breaking down just because it's been used and backwashed and used and backwashed and it'll, that, those fines will, are what you'll lose as you backwash.
Yeah. Now, so this, now, did you guys look at any alternatives to alum? Because I know we had some issues with that at one point and I'm just wondering, is there some things you're going to look at and tell us, look, you don't need to use that, you can use this, it's...
Yeah, so we did do a kind of a description of the different options. The two main would be a ferric-type coagulant, ferric sulfate, ferric chloride. I think sulfate's the more common when you see it around here, plants that have switched. And then polyaluminum chloride, which is another aluminum-type coagulant, are the two ones that you would, are the two options you would typically see when people switch from aluminum sulfate.
Do either one of those options take us out of the situation where if there's too much of either one of them that gets into the system, it's not dangerous?
So the effectiveness of a coagulant is based on the pH of your water. So you guys are right on the line of alum. So alum, once you start to get above eight of a pH, the alum instead of being your coagulant and allowing it to, because the coagulant has a charge and it attracts particles so then it becomes bigger and bigger particles so you can settle it out. So instead of being there to attract those particles, it'll, it becomes soluble at those higher or lower pHs and so it, once it's soluble, that aluminum leaches into your water. And that's, that aluminum is a contaminant and it's a, it has a, what am I trying to say? It has an MCL, so it has an MCL for, that's the state, it's a secondary contaminant, right? John?
Yeah, and like Mark had said too, there's some plants that are using ferric sulfate now to try to get away from that. Some of the other plants around the state where the pH of the raw water seems to be trending up a little bit and so there are a number of people looking at it, but it's still, it's still very common and it's also just not as effective of a coagulant at those higher levels as well. So that's why there's a lot of attention on it, most, more recently, I'd say in the last hard years especially.
Yep.
And maybe I'm going too deep into this right now and if I am, I apologize, but do any of those not leach lead from old pipes in an old system until we replace those?
So the, yeah, and the whole, the lead leaching thing is also a major function of pH and chloride and several other different water chemistry factors, but the bottom line is with any water chemistry changes, you gotta, you gotta watch it and you gotta look at it. We were, we've been talking with a researcher, David Cornwell, who used to teach at MSU. In fact, some of our coworkers, he was their prof and, you know, we've been talking with him a little bit about alum and, you know, and if that creates some problems of its own or switching from that to something else, when the system's been used to alum and you, now you've got possibly some aluminum that's solidified out, you know, settled out over the years on the pipes or if you change that, you could potentially then start pulling the aluminum precipitate off. So it's, and it's not real well-understood when we presented that to Eagle, you know, they came back and they said, oh, we're really only hearing that from that guy, you know. So it's just not all that well-understood and yet there's a ton of attention on it because of what, you know, Flint and everything.
Sure.
I think the best thing really to do is keep tracking your lead numbers out in the system and, you know, look for trends or jumps, but otherwise, try to stay the course to, you know, not disrupt things, I guess, is what's typically being done.
And we're doing a similar project. He was talking about Dr. Cornwell. We're doing a corrosion control treatment study at Grand Rapids, looking at a change to their corrosion control chemical, which is they use an ortho-polyphosphate mix. So they're looking to change that because that has some other effects, including scaling the pipe and whatnot and reducing the hydraulic capacity of their pipes. So, and part of that's looking at optimized coagulation. So with any change, I mean, there's probably a decent amount of study that goes behind that for that exact reason. So you're not, you know, because you don't want to change something and then all of that scale that's protecting the lead from leaching out to wash or to get dissolved back into the water, I mean, that would be, without being said, really bad thing.
That'd be extremely disastrous.
Yeah.
That's what you want to avoid.
Yeah.
I think Barry's got a point.
What I was going to say real quick is we're looking at it in Marysville. We are getting switched. We are getting away from alum. That's coming up in the project. I know we did some studies with Fishbeck on it. We're going to switch to a ferric base. And dealing with the DEQ, they, what they'll do is, you know, what they told us, right now, just like St. Clair, we sample for lead and copper every three years, but if you go through a coagulant change, they're going to make you go on unreduced. But typically, I think it's going to be six months or a year, once every six months or once a year, the places have to sample lead and copper. But when your numbers have been really good for a certain amount of time, you get on reduced monitoring, which is three years, which is what, you know, we're both on right now. We will come off that unreduced and either go to every six months or every year until they can establish a proven that the coagulant change didn't make a difference. But we are, if it's any consolation for Marysville, we are getting away from alum, absolutely.
And I think Traverse City has done it as well without any, none that I know of adverse effects.
And they, you know, and they're, you know, lucky for Traverse City, they did it at an earlier time before they were really aware of the effects that this could cause based on Flint. They, they got away with it without a whole lot of scrutiny from the DEQ and they said they, they had a little bit of an intermixed change the day that they did their, because I talked to these guys, you know, to see how it went. And the day that they made the switch, they noticed a little bit of a weird activity in the filters for a few hours and after that, they, from what I know, they haven't looked back yet. They are extremely happy with how it went.
Thank you.
Has anyone done a study to find out what is causing the pH to change in the raw water?
That's a good question because it's here and we've seen it in Lake Michigan trend over time, moving up, so.
What was that question?
Has anyone done a study to see if what the, why it pH is trending up in some of these raw water?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything conclusive on that either.
Well, that's a, that would be a concern with the way you treat to combat that, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Is it acid rain, fellas? Is that what it is?
Well, if it were acid, it would come down.
Yeah.
If it were, it's going up, so it's the opposite of the acid.
Is it rain or base?
I tend to think it's cyclical. I mean, the lake levels, the organics in the water, a lot of that stuff is cyclical and it's not unlikely that the water chemistry is a little bit as well.
The interesting thing that we, Dr. Cornwell is a professor at Florida now and he owns a firm out of Virginia Beach and all the plants down there pH adjust. So they adjust the pH down to get their alum to be at the most effective pH and then ultimately you have to boost the pH back up before, in your finished water before you send it distribution so it's not so acidic as it gets into your pipes. But, so when we talk about it here, he's always, he always gives us a hard time because we don't, no plants around here really pH, I haven't heard of one.
You did mention that as an alternative.
Yeah, yep, yep. That's in there as an alternative. You can adjust the pH.
Is it wise for us to consider something like that for the fluctuations that happen in pH over the life of a 40-year-old plant, in the next 40 years?
Yeah, so I've heard, as we've talked kind of some of this with some plants, I work a lot in Grand Rapids and Holland and they've had discussion with our Eagle district engineer on that and that, that always seems to come up as an option. Well, why don't we just pH adjust? We can add, you know, an acid, get it down, make the alum more effective so it's not leaching out and then boost it back up before it goes to distribution. Because the alum, and alum's an acid, so it's inherently going to make the pH go down. So that's why you guys see your pH, the raw water pH around eight and then your finished water around seven and a half, but alum, alum is most effective in that, kind of that six to seven range.
So we'd have to boost the pH to send it back out.
Mm-hmm. Because you, if you wanted to drop the pH to a six or something to increase your alum effectiveness to, you know, the most effective rate, you wouldn't want to send that to your distribution, you want to boost it back up.
How cost-effective is that over the life of a plant too, for the actual treatment?
Oh, it's more expensive.
Yeah.
Much more expensive or...
Well, I mean, you know, you're adding another chemical and so...
Potentially two, two different chemicals.
We're actually, we're doing a study with another consultant, actually, for SAGNAH looking at that as well, but, you know, I don't, I don't know there that they're going to do it either. So it adds complexity, it adds cost and then you got to weigh, are you, you know, what are you really getting for that? And that's what it, that's the question and, you know, a lot of plants are adding up, you know, a phosphate, a phosphoric acid or something like that as part of another step in the corrosion control scheme of things or an ortho-phosphate and that might be, you know, as good as anything.
I see.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess my concern is, what you're talking about is when it leaves our plant, what it does to the rest of our water system.
Right.
Right.
You know, that's my, that's...
So it's not, you know, I don't think it's changed drastically and a little on the basic side is better than on the acidic side. So with the tendency to raw water go up a little bit and finished water going up a little bit, rather than it trends that way, but the other, the other reason people are looking at it is because of just the effectiveness of alum to remove contaminants is less effective as you go higher, higher, higher. But the reality is, is the raw water quality is still very good and the finished water is excellent. So it's all, it's a little bit of, you know, relative sort of order of magnitude stuff that you're talking about real fine adjustments, but, you know, it's important and certainly gained a lot of attention, but, you know, this conversation 10 years ago, we wouldn't have been talking about the pH. No one was really that worried about it because the finished water quality in terms of turbidity was, you know, it's excellent. It's excellent water, so, but certainly, you know, it's a valid thing to look at and now and with all the tension and everything, with the corrosion element of it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any questions on the roughness coefficient? I think that one was pretty, and that's, this is one of the ones that's, the coagulant study and this, there obviously there's no cost associated with that, so those won't show up in that table at the end of the slides. Oh, oh, here we go. Eagle also identified the inability to add a chlorine residual after your ground storage tank, so they'd like to see that where if something happens in the ground storage tank, it stays there too long, you lose residual there, you can boost it up to what it needs to be before you send it to distribution. So that would be in addition of a chem feed pump and running some piping out to your pumps and a pretty straightforward improvement that you guys could make to achieve that goal. One of the issues also that came up and this one, and this one looks like it could be an issue. So you have a diffuser wall between your flocculation basin and your sedimentation basin and the purpose of that is after you've injected your chemical, you've flocculated it, so you've caused these particles to hit each other and grow in size and so you have this nice fluffy flock that we like to call it and that will settle out easily. The diffuser wall is supposed to slowly diffuse that into your sed tank so that, you know, you're not breaking that flock up that you've just paid all that money to form. So there's some standards associated with that, the velocity through there, it's about 1.5, there's a range, 1.2 to 1.8. And right now, when you guys are operating at a higher rate, you're, you know, twice that, you're at three feet per second. So that's, this could be an issue in that as you've created your flock in your flocculation tank, you jet it through these holes and you've broken it up so then it's not easily settleable and you'll see potential effects of that on these next slide, that flock not being able to settle. So we evaluated what it would take, what that would look like to core some additional holes in order to reduce that velocity so that, that wouldn't be an issue, if it is an issue. And then the last item identified by Eagle is right now you guys have a, it's a 200-gallon steel tank, an old steel tank out there that holds your diesel fuel in case you have a power outage at your shorewell pumping station and that would power your diesel engine-driven pump in that case. So right now that tank doesn't have any secondary containment, so any spills would go to the floor, to floor drains. So this would, this improvement would replace that tank with a double-wall tank with leak detection, some additional piping to make it easier to fill so you're not dragging a hose through the door and trying to fill it. And another thing to note is, one of the other improvements we looked at is adding a standby generator at that pumping station. So if you were to add a standby generator, that'd be natural gas, you wouldn't need to do this improvement. This wouldn't, this diesel tank would go away and the diesel engine-driven pumps would go away.
So to my thinking, getting rid of the diesel or gasoline-fired one and going to the gas-fired one, it seems to me cleaner, less steps to where something can, I don't know, I don't think it's spilled, but...
Yeah, yeah. So the other improvement, the other advantage of a standby generator too would be you could power multiple pumps, you'd be able to meet the firm capacity of the plant. So if you lost power in the heat of the summer and you were needing to make water, you'd be able to turn on two pumps and still maintain the capacity of the plant. Here, right now, you only have one pump that's available to be on a diesel-driven, so you can only power a single pump using this system.
So Aaron, were you talking about a natural gas or were you talking just a generator in general?
I thought you were saying natural gas.
Oh, yeah, natural, well, a natural gas, are you, like a natural gas engine or a natural gas generator? So you can get a natural gas-powered engine that would power, that could power a pump and be a similar setup here. You wouldn't need the diesel tank. You wouldn't need the diesel tank anymore. But if you went with the standby generator, which was another thing we evaluated, that, that diesel engine goes away and that standby generator powers your electrical gear, which then you can run.
Yeah, like Go-Generac puts outside of people's houses, but this is.
But you could get, you could get a diesel or a natural gas generator.
Correct.
And usually there's a, there's a size point where that, where it's a lot less, uh, expensive to go with diesel. But in that case, you'd have a, a tank that's some, some base tank in the, in the generator. And it would be all dual contained and everything. So that might still be a selection process of, of, because natural gas on a, a bigger generator can be pretty expensive. So I just, I wasn't sure if we were.
Yeah, thank you.
I know we'll get into the generator later on, but I just wanted to point out before we forget later, um, so if that engine doesn't work, we can't pump water into the plant at all. So we, you know, we run out of water. And when Tom's worked here, that situation has happened. And Tom, how did, how did you get the generator started?
Uh, I had to jumpstart it with my pickup.
So his pickup jumpstarting that a few years ago prevented us from running out of water. So that's why we want the standby generator to ever prevent us from beginning that type of situation again.
Yeah. And, and, and to, to that point, you know, a, a standby generator can auto start. You can make sure that it's always going to be there for you. Um, so that might, I don't know if that's in your maintenance plan right now is to, to run that diesel engine just to make sure that i- if, if you need be, it's there for you. So that's a, a maintenance item for the diesel engine or a generator. That would be, it would, it, we can set it up to, it would let you know if it's not going to run. There, we can have some alarms set up that if something happens and it didn't go through its auto start. All right. So that's through the Eagle issues. And then like I said, your staff had identified, um, seventeen issues that we went through. And, and I'll try to, I think I'm already past my twenty minutes. Um, I'll try to, uh, just kind of go high level through these. If you guys have any questions, just let me know. Um, just cut me off. Um, one of the items is the filter control valve actuators. These are original to the plant, um, these electric actuators. So right now they can be, um, um, they're, they're controlled remotely, but there's no feedback. So your operator doesn't know what the position status of those are unless they go downstairs and look at some indicating lights on a panel on the wall. Um, so, so new actuators would be able to have remote control and feedback. So you guys can know that those actuators are firing off at the right time when you're backwashing or, or bringing filters offline and online. Um, the other thing we looked at is right now there's a filter to waste. And the concept behind filter to waste is right after you backwash a filter, in order to ripen it, you can open up a filter to waste valve and, and waste that initial because there'll be a turbidity spike if you brought that right back online. Um, so for a short period of time, you can just waste, um, the, the fluid that comes out of a filter, ripen it, shut that and, and then your filter will be operating as normal. Um, so right now that's a manual process and doesn't get used because that's a manual process. So this evaluation looked at some automated valves that can automate that process. So then you can ripen your filters after a backwash.
So I'll ask this, but I think I know the answer. But so if we go, if we go to the valves that can be, are monitored by the SCADA system, whatever, and computers crash or whatever, you know, worst case scenario, it still can be all done manually?
Yes. Yep. Yep. There'd be some panels that you can, um, you can control those. Or, um, um, most of these actuators, you can control them locally, you can control remotely. But then they also have a hand wheel that in, in the worst case where you lose all power for an extended period of time, you can literally open those up, um, by hand. So, and then this evaluation also considered, as we're replacing those actuators, we replace the valves, um, and, and since those are original to the plant as well. Um, another, uh, thing that showed up is right now, um, the plant, um, their flow meters. So the way they track flow through their filters and, and their raw water flow, finished water flow, they use Venturi style meters, um, which are good if installed correctly. Um, so we, uh, we have a photo here of one that's installed incorrectly where, um, you can see on the upstream side of it, there's an elbow. So that right there is going to make that a very inaccurate meter. Um, so with some, some reworking of the piping and then adding, um, an electromagnetic meter that's more accurate in some of those tight spaces, um, we can, we can get a, a much more accurate reading on those flows. So, um, so that evaluation looked at replacing all of the existing Venturi meters with electromagnetic meters. And the Venturi meters are, are finicky. They need to be calibrated, um, how their, their piping is set up for how they're, they read the, the pressure difference across. That needs to be, um, to a certain standard, which doesn't look like it was installed that way to be accurate. Um, so these are, um, kind of a maintenance item that need to be calibrated all the time where an electromag is, is just gonna, um, it's a full bore. There's no head loss through it and it just gives you an accurate reading all the time. The existing chemical feed, um, is completely manually controlled. So if there's any change in, um, water quality coming in and an adjustment needs to be made to the chemical feed system, if the plant changes their flows, a guy has to literally go out there and, and change things by hand. Monitoring, looking at levels in the tanks. I think one of them is a yardstick where you actually have to look at it. So, um, some chemical feed SCADA improvements, we can, we can link this all back to the existing SCADA. Or there's another, um, evaluation on upgrading the SCADA system, which it would be compatible with. Um, so we can, we can connect that to the existing SCADA system with a control panel. Um, and then we can add some instrumentation so that the operator can remotely look at how much chemical is left. They can trans, uh, or they can feed out of their day tank and change as water quality and water flows are, are changing. And they can do that in real time instead of having to walk out there and, and adjust everything by hand. Um, currently, um, the, we were talking a little bit about coagulation. So that would be the chemical that you use for, for, for binding all of those particles in the water. Um, so right now, um, as part of that process, you need to efficiently mix that chemical into your raw water. Um, right now you can see kind of that long green pipe spool that's out there. Um, that's a static mixer, which was designed for when the plant's running at full capacity. Um, so as the plant ramps down, like in the winter or at, at night, or you shut down completely at night. But if you ramp down on lower demands, that process becomes much more inefficient because it's designed for the higher capacity. So we, we evaluated what that mixing energy would look like and at your lower flows and average flows, it's not very efficient. It's not to the standard. So this evaluation looked at, um, replacing that with two mechanical style rapid mixers that have an impeller in them that would, can, you can adjust the speed. So as water quality, water flow is changing, you can change that speed and be able to get your mixing energy you need for your coagulant much more effectively. And since, um, since settling that pretreatment process seems to be the issue, this, this would help that with more efficient mixing of your coagulant. And, um, we would install two mixers side by side. So if you had to maintain, if one, you know, you had to take one off for maintenance or, or something, you'd be able to utilize the second one. So you'd never be without that process. We evaluated the existing flocculation system again in response to, um, the thought that we were getting poor flocculation and poor sedimentation. Um, so right now you have a style of, of, of mixer that has, it's faster moving. It's an impeller style or a propeller style mixer that spins and, and forces these collisions to happen. So you can build up your particles for sedimentation. Um, and, and inherently those vertical style propeller mixers, they move quickly. And, and one of their issues is for weaker style flocks, they can tear those apart as they're mixing. Um, so the plant typically operates those at fifty percent speed or less in order to try to avoid shearing their flock as they're creating it. And it, it's still, you can, you can turn those things all the way down as low as they go. And you'd still have what they call the tip speed. So the, the speed of that thing spinning is above what the standard is. So, um, ten states is the standards we, we go by when we design water plants. And that is going to be above the ten state standard for tip speed, no matter what you do, no matter how far you turn it down. And further you turn it down, then you reduce the mixing energy in there. So you don't get good mixing energy and you don't facilitate those collisions. So, um, this evaluation looked at paddle wheel style flocculator. So replacing that mixer with, um, it's essentially just, um, a big paddle that's turned on its side. And they're, they're slower moving. They, they move at, um, probably ten percent speed of what you see right here. But they have a bigger surface area. So they, they give you your mixing energy while moving slowly. So you don't tear apart the flock that you just created. And that would get you guys into the current design standard for, for flocculation. Um, so this is what I was talking about earlier where if you have issues with settling of your flock. Um, so right now the plant sees a lot of this stuff getting through their tube settlers, which is a, a rapid style sedimentation system. Um, instead of settling out to the bottom, it's, it's breaking through and settling on top of it. Um, so that, that could be a few different issues, um, overfeed of your chemical. Most likely it's because you're not creating the, the size flock you need to get it settled or you're overloading the plate. So we evaluated the existing system. It looks like when it was designed, um, the loading rate is higher than what the current standard is. So this evaluation looked at adding some additional tube settler modules into your basin, which would fit. And that could get you, uh, reduce your loading rate and, um, get you to the current design standard for tube settlers, which is what, um, you have installed out there. Any questions? I'm kind of breezing through this quick. Nope. All right. Um, the existing sludge collection system, which is underneath those tube settlers and that scrapes the sludge off the bottom. And that gets sucked out with this pump here on the right. This, it looks black or brown, dark brown color. Um, so that is a chain in flight system. It just moves and scrapers across the ground. Um, and there's, uh, there's been some issues with that. It's old. Um, it's, it's, some of that's prone to, to, to breaking. And when that, if those breaks need to repair, you're, you have to bring your whole sedimentation tank down. So it splits the, the plant capacity in half. Um, so because that, that equipment's at the end of its useful life, um, this evaluation looked at, um, a vacuum style collector system, which is essentially a cart that rides back and forth under there with some orifices on the bottom of the pipe that's on the cart. And you would turn this pump on, it would just suck the sludge out as it's pumped out of there. So you can get rid of your, um, your chain in flights and you can get rid of your cross collector augers as well. And, um, and just be able to utilize that, um, vacuum collection system, which is, is pretty much what we see going in at any retrofit or new plants of these vacuum style collection systems. Um, an interesting thing that we did as part of the study, it was actually a kind of a cool investigative type, um, um, a, a little thing, um, um, is the backwash pump. So right now you have a single backwash pump. So if there was, and that's pretty common. We've seen this in some of these plants. Um, and if that backwash pump were ever to go down, you would lose that ability to backwash your filters currently. So we looked at some different things to be able to backwash your filters without a backwash pump. Um, if this backwash pump went down. So we looked at adding a second backwash pump. Doesn't look like there's enough room in your, in, in that clear well area to do that. Um, so we looked at some different things. We looked at using the transfer pumps. We looked at using the high service pumps. Um, we looked at using the elevated storage tank and then backfeeding it through the plant and, and, and backwashing that way. And then we, we ultimately settled on, um, the ground storage tank has enough head pressure that you could backwash your filters and it has enough volume to be able to backwash, uh, the entire backwash duration. Um, there's some, it, it's quite complex what you need to do at the plant to, to be able to facilitate that. Um, you, you can't, um, use your transfer pumps. So then your filters would have to go offline during a backwash. Um, your clear well would have to be at a certain level for the duration. Your ground storage tank would have to be at a certain level. So there's some complexity to that operation. Um, what we recommend as part of this evaluation is some additional piping where some valves can be turned. And then you can maintain your filters and run those while being able to backwash through the ground storage tank in case you lost your backwash pump. Um, so that was pretty interesting that, um, what came out of that little evaluation. Any questions on that?
How often does that happen?
Uh, I don't think it's hap, I, I don't, I, I don't know. You guys haven't said that you've lost that backwash pump for any extended period of time. But it is forty some years old. So that could be, you know, it could happen at any point. But I don't think you've ever had to try to.
We've lost two pumps since I've been there. Neither one of them were the backwash pump. But like, we have one out right now.
Okay. So you're starting to see some pumps of that vintage start to, start to fail to get rebuilt.
How, how often do we have to backwash?
Uh, it depends on the turbidity in the water, how, how dirty the water is going on the filter. Like right now in the winter time, we usually get around a hundred hours out of the filter before we have to wash it. Hundred running hours on it. Uh, in the summertime, it, it's dramatically less, you know, maybe sixty to seventy hours if the water's dirty.
So you were saying that instead of using, instead of pumping water out of our.
Clear well?
Clear well, we're just going to use gravity out of the big above ground, force it down through a pipe and backwash that way?
You, you can force it through the existing pipe. The problem is, is that pipe you're forcing it through is the pipe that, um, that goes out to fill your ground storage tank. So you lose the ability to fill the ground storage tank. Um, so you have, at that point, you have to shut down your filters or keep your clear well really low during the duration. So you have some wa, area or some space for that filtered water to go because you're not filling that tank anymore. You're using that pipe to, to go the other direction for backwash.
How long does it take to backwash?
Should be like twenty minutes.
So potentially once a week for twenty minutes, we need to have our ground, our low tank filled and all that other stuff.
Yeah. Yeah. You would have, you, you'd draw your clear well down, you'd shut off your transfer pumps. You'd make sure your ground storage tank is high. And then, and this is only if you lost your backwash pump. And then you can, you can, uh, run that backwash through the ground storage tank with no existing improvements. Now, if we did a, a kind of a bypass pipe loop, if you needed to do this, you know, the operator can go down. If you lost your backwash pump, say you need to go rebuild, you lose it for a month. Um, the operator can go down, turn some valves and then you'd still be able to produce water while you're doing that process.
Because we have, uh, three filters today currently. So not just once a week, we'd be more than three times.
Yeah. Yeah. And typically, like you said, in the summer, it's more often. Now, if we improve the coagulation, flocculation, sedimentation process with some of these improvements, you might be able to get some more filter runtimes because now that stuff isn't breaking through that process and, and, and blinding your filters more quickly. Um, so this is the one we were talking about earlier. I won't spend too much time, but this would be a standby generator at your shorewell. Um, so we looked at a hundred and fifty KW natural gas. Um, that would be able to power two pumps to maintain your firm capacity as well as all the other station loads. So if you had heating, um, lighting, that type of stuff would all be able to be maintained with a hundred and fifty KW generator. The, one, one thing we did look at, um, that makes a lot of sense when we talk, we're, we're going to talk about another couple improvements at the shorewell station is, is building an addition on there to house the standby generator. Because, um, there's some chemical feed improvements that need to happen there that, um, would be beneficial to put in a separate room. That way we can meet the, the HVAC requirements and, and whatnot for having chemical in a space. So with an addition, you can put the generator. We can move the electro equipment into that space because right now it's in the main room and it's very humid and corrosive. And you can see some, that electro equipment starting to rust and degrade already. Um, so you can, you can get the, the electro equipment outside of the humid space where the pumps are. We can put a chemical feed system out there as well as a standby generator, all in a, in a building addition. So our evaluation included a cost for that building addition as well. Um, so this is what I was talking about. So right now when, um, the plant feeds, um, for zebra muscle control at the intake. So they feed a little bit of chlorine to keep zebra muscles from clogging your intake crib. The, uh, um, they fill drums at the plant and then truck them down themselves to the shorewell, which, um, we wouldn't recommend, um, continuing that practice. Um, what we would like to do, what we recommend is building that addition and then receiving drums there. So then you can have drums in a separate room outside of this space. That way we can meet the HVAC requirements, the air exchanges for, for sodium hypochlorite, which can, when off gassed, it can create some corrosive environment. So you can see the electro equipment in there. Um, so as part of the electrical improvements, we would recommend moving that out into a, a separate space outside of that to be able to prolong the life and, and reduce any corrosion that could happen because of a humid or off gassing of chlorine. And right now there's no secondary containment as well. And I'll just touch a little bit. We looked at different alternatives as part of this evaluation. We looked at, uh, bulk storage out there and just receiving, um, having a bulk storage tank and having a truck come and fill those tanks intermittently. That didn't make sense. You, you, they just don't use that much chlorine out there to be able to, um, to want to store that much. Because the sodium hypochlorite will degrade as it sits for a long time. So if you have this big tank full of sodium hypo, um, that you've paid for, if it sits there for months and months, um, it'll just degrade. And then when you go to use it, it doesn't have, um, any concentration, any chlorine concentration anymore. It's all off gassed into the environment. Um, so just touch a little bit about this one, um, a SCADA system replacement. This is one where, um, you kind, you guys kind of have a proprietary system that was installed, I think by, was it a local contractor maybe? That, that did it. It's more set up for a kind of industrial type use. Um, so this would be upgrading with, um, a, a new control panel, new SCADA system. So this would be upgrading with a new control panel, new SCADA system. And updated software that's more, more widely used for water treatment type, type plants. So, this would be able, the plant would be able to have better monitoring, better control. And, and this could be done in conjunction with what we talked, that chem feed system improvements. Where this could all be integrated and an operator can control everything through the SCADA system. And I think this went down recently, right? This went down and you guys had kind of scrambled to get a copy of the, of the program from whoever the supplier was to get back online. Touched a little bit about this. We looked at a wholesale electrical system improvements. All that electro equipment is original of the plant. I think there are some concerns with some of the panels in terms of corrosion. I think some of the panels actually buzz at you and there's some issue with the plant wanting to even approach those. And I, we, as part of this, we looked at not only the electro improvements, but what it would cost to get an arc flash assessment. And to get things up to code of the existing system. So there's a cost in there to do that. But our recommendation would be to replace that if there was a plant improvement type project. Just because of the age of the equipment and the current state of the equipment. Part of this also was, and your high service pumps, those are across the line pumps. So they, you turn them on, they're full speed, full power. And they only pump one flow rate. So to be able to have some better flexibility for control and to be able to control the level in your elevated storage tank. As, and an electrical improvement, we can add some variable frequency drive. So you can turn those pumps up and down to better meet the demands of the system. Instead of just filling up the tank, shutting them off, filling up the tank, shutting them off. So that could be an option. We looked at some, not just process type things. We looked at the roof and kind of been inspection. The roof looks pretty good. We were trying to find some information on when it was, this PVC membrane was overlaid on top of the existing roof. Couldn't, couldn't find much of it. But, there's two different costs in the evaluation. One would be kind of a repair of things that need to happen. There's some flashing that's damaged, some roof drains that have been, the grates have been pulled off or those are damaged. Some caulking that needs to happen, that can get you by. Our recommendation is if you were to do a plant improvement project, that we would replace these roofs and get a, you know, a twenty-five or a thirty-year roof on it as we do that project. Same at the plant and at the shorewell pumping station. We went through the HVAC system. Most of this equipment is original to the plant and is varying degrees of whether it's operating or not. So this looked at replacing the air handling system, exhaust fans, getting the ventilation up to code. Especially in your chemical feed areas. Looking at controls and replacing those. And just getting things up to kind of the standard of water treatment plants. We also added, looked at adding some additional dehumidifiers. Cause it looks like there's some humidity issue that's starting. You can start to see conduit, ductwork, paint peeling off the walls, that type of thing. So controlling the humidity in that space as well. With that, we looked at plumbing system improvements. So, there's some improvements that needed to meet current plumbing codes, emergency showers, locker room sink. The basement sump pumps are very corroded. So those should be replaced. The filter, that, well, yeah. So that filtered waste system that we talked about a few slides back. That, that could be, instead of wasting that to sanitary, that's a very low amount of solids. You can return that to the head of the plant and, and let it go through. Instead of just sending it as a volume to your wastewater treatment plant. So that could be an option. And to do that, you would need a sump pump system that's contained. So it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be a sump that would accept floor drains or anything like that. It would be a contained sump and then you can pump that stream back to the head of your plant. So you're not, you don't have to pay for it to go out to the sanitary system.
Any guess that you could give me as to how much we pump to our sanitary like that in a day?
Do you know, the full volume of the backwash goes to sanitary?
Thirty-one thousand gallons every time we do a backwash.
Which you do at least once a week?
Multiple times a week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it could be upwards of fifty thousand gallons a week is going to our waste treatment creaming plant that doesn't really need to if we do this?
Well, so filter, we could do that to capture the entire backwash volume. We would have to have kind of a reclaim tank and pump it back at a controlled rate. The filter to waste is a smaller volume. So that, that we can do-
Might be twenty percent of the-
Yeah.
But, for your example of fifty, it might be ten, ten thousand.
That would go to the plant still, or that we would say?
That you could, that you can return to the head, you can pump right back into your raw water line and save that from going out. So every time you-
Most of it's still wasted then?
Yeah, so I would say you said thirty-one thousand gallons. So, you know, maybe four or five thousand gallons you can save every time you backwash a filter. Which, I mean, if you backwash a filter three times a week, four times a week. Over a year's time, you know, that's hundreds of thousands of gallons that don't go there, just in that filter to waste stream. But that is, right now, that's a process that isn't used. So that's not, right now, that, that filter to waste, that's something, it's set up for that. But because it's a manual process, the plant doesn't do that. So that would be an additional volume that goes to your sanitary that you could, you don't have to do that. You recapture it and return it and recycle it through the plant.
I guess why I'm asking, maybe you can just clear me up on this. So if, if ten thousand gallons a week is not being sent to our wastewater. And there's fifty-two weeks and there's ten thousand gallons. Is that five point two million gallons in a year?
That would be, if it's, if it's ten thousand gallons a week, yeah.
So, am I right in saying that if we did this, then we're increasing the capacity of our waste plant?
It, yeah, but-
Not, no, cause right now the filter to waste really isn't happening. As it, by rule, you don't have to filter to waste.
Yes.
You let, you know, let the filter settle down on its own in between backwashes. Or if you started off, you have to watch the turbidity levels to remain between point, I think, lower than point one.
Yep.
And you, so you wouldn't really be saving anything from going to the wastewater plant. But you'd prohibit it from going in the future once, if this project was to happen.
Yeah. Like if you decided, okay, I want to do filter to waste. And, and we wanna start doing that process to avoid a turbidity spike. Then we can return that to the plant so we don't have to send that five million gallons a year to the wastewater plant.
I think it's five hundred and twenty thousand gallons, isn't it?
Yeah, I think you're right. It's ten times fifty-two, it'd be, yep, five hundred and twenty thousand. So half a million gallons.
Half a million.
That you wouldn't be sending. Which over a year's time, on a daily basis, isn't, isn't that much. Like you wouldn't be looking at having to do a big increase at your wastewater treatment plant. If you decided to keep doing that. Alright, so, this is, this was the interesting one that I assume we'll have a little bit of a discussion on. So right now, we talked a little bit about this early, the four filter rule. So, there's a rule, and I think it, it came about right about when this plant was constructed. It was nineteen seventy-eight. So it's retroactive to, I think, I looked it up, it's January twelve seventy-eight. Plants don't have to abide by that for their capacity. And I think this plant was, it started construction maybe in seventy-six. It was completed in seventy-eight. So it was right around this time this rule came into effect. So, it states that if a plant has less than four filters for your rated capacity, you have to assume one filter's offline. And that's, and that's the only one that's, that's limited like that. So like your sedimentation, flocculation, you get the full capacity. But if you have less than four filters, you have to assume one of those is offline for your rated capacity of the plant. So, you know, if that rule, if you were required to follow that rule, which Eagle is not, is kind of grandfathered you in at the moment. Your plant would go to two MGD instead of a three MGD rated capacity. And so, and Eagle identified that, that rule in their sanitary survey as something that is there. But, they're not enforcing it at the moment. Now John talked a little bit about a situation where Eagle did enforce that because of demands at Luddington. So they needed to do an expansion in order to, to get four filters and be outside of that rule. So once you get to four filters, that rule doesn't apply. And you don't have to assume one filter's taken out of service. So, if that rule ever were to be enforced, your plant would go to two MGD. And that's, you would be at capacity at that point. So right now, looking at your reliability study. Your current, your current demands are about one point eight seven, one point nine. And your, your twenty-year demand projection is about two MGD for a maximum day. So-
This study was done about five years ago before we had all this development come to town?
Yep, twenty sixteen, I think was the reliability study. So, if that were the case, you guys would have to move into a twenty-four hour operation. Then you would be producing water around the clock. So right now, you guys are producing water when it's being used. So your, your demands aren't enough, you can shut it down for eight hours a day and then come back and start it back up. If you were to run overnight, people don't use water at night. So you have to find a place to put that water. So it may require some storage improvements in the distribution system if you have to start operating at a twenty-four hour interval.
I'd also have to hire two new staffers.
Correct.
How can we, how much do we store right now in the, in the bottom and the top?
That tank, that's a- Six hundred, the big one, the ground storage tank. Is six, and then the elevated's like two, yeah, two seventy-five.
What were those?
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons.
The big tall one?
Yes, yeah, and then the ground storage is six-
You said six twenty-five, right?
Six hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons. So you, you would be classified as a little bit light on storage, especially if you had to move to a twenty-four hour operating interval. Cause right now, you, you produce water as it's being used. So you're not having to rely on storage overnight or during the day when demands are average. But if you were to move to twenty-four hours, no one uses, not many people use water at night. So if you create, you know, a third of your water at night, you have to be able to put it somewhere. And that, the storage you have wouldn't be adequate to run all night long, most likely. That would require some modeling, but just looking at it, it's not, it'd be a little bit light. So there, there's some improvements that would probably need to happen if this were the case. If you guys were degraded to a two, two MGD plant. And then that also kicks in kind of, so Eagle kind of looks at, when they look at your demands. As soon as you get above eighty percent of your demand, they start requiring you to look at plant expansions. So if you were degraded to two, now you would be at like ninety-nine percent of your demands. So they would require you to look at an expansion at that point. That's kind of their rule of thumb. They look at eighty percent and they start to, start to have evaluations for expansion. Or different ways to meet with some additional storage in town or that type of thing.
So could you use storage to meet that capacity demand?
You can. There's some calculations. So there's evaluations that are there. And it's, there's some rule of thumbs, different ways to calculate based on your peak demand, your fire flow requirements, that type of thing, and how much storage you need. We didn't do that as part of this. We didn't look, anything outside the plant, we didn't evaluate. But that may be something, I don't remember, I think there was a discussion on storage capacity in the AEW reliability study. So there might be some information in there. But-
A second tower somewhere in the city could meet that, we could meet that capacity demand. Cause what, today we're rated at three million?
Yep.
If we didn't do anything.
If you didn't do anything.
We started increasing our demand and chose not to update the water. And I'm just sitting out here, I'm not meaning anything by it. And we decided that we wanted to meet these demands by, by adding a second water tower. Would that-
So that would be part of the calculation. So you gotta look at your, what, what your required fire flow is. So what your insurance or your ISO requirements. You have to look at your peak demands. And then you have to look at what your plant can produce in terms of capacity. So if this were to happen, right now, you're, you get three on that, that part of the storage calculation. You get three MGD. But if this were to happen, you were degraded to two, that would go back to two. So then that increases the amount of storage you need because you're not allowed, you can't use that three as part of your calculation. You have to use two.
What is the fire demand right now? Anybody know?
It often will, will vary. And it's, it's actually a voluntary thing as a municipality. And the trade-off is your insurance rates and so forth. But it can vary anywhere from fifteen hundred gallons a minute in certain residential zone all the way up to thirty-five hundred gallons a minute to four thousand gallons a minute in different areas of town for commercial or near critical infrastructure type things.
So if our community continued to grow its commercial business, industrial processing or other commercial uses, then that would, that would increase the rate of our fire.
Yep, if, if you were, if you were wanting to provide that fire flow. So we've seen some, we've had some municipalities that have big industrial type users that have, you know, they'll literally build tanks onsite in order to have their own storage. So if you wanted to provide that for them. You know, we've, we've looked all the way up to, you know, some communities where they have some pharmaceutical companies sixty-five hundred gallons per minute. So in reference, seven hundred gallons per minute is one million gallons a day. So if you're at four thousand, you know, that's, you're, you're talking about almost six million gallons per day. But that's for an entire twenty-four hour duration. Most fire flows are for a certain duration, could be two hours, six hours, depending on what the-
Common industrial one might be like thirty-five hundred gallons a minute for a four hour duration. So you work that out.
Yep.
It's like eight hundred gallons a gallon. So that would just be a storage volume. So some industri, some industries will, like Mark said, they'll just put their own fire protection on their own site. If the municipality can't supply it.
Yep.
I'm sure this is in this here somewhere, but I'll just ask you, cause you probably know. But in our sixteen hour shift, how many gallons can we make?
Oh, I got that. Hold on. And then real quick, before we, before we move on, just, this is, this is a really important topic for us. Barry or Tom, do you wanna have anything to add to this specific, you know, the implications of this four filter rule?
Yeah, I'm sure. We do have some slides on the plant expansion that, that will explain some of these questions, I think. So I'll, I'll just kind of talk about the alternatives we looked at to alleviate this situation. Then we'll talk about plant demands and, and what we looked at in terms of how much you can produce with a three MGD plant, four MGD, that type of thing. That's, that's in like three slides.
Okay.
So I'll get through this.
I'm gonna make sure everybody gets their chance to-
Yeah, I think, I think you'll wanna weigh in on that, that slide. So we looked at some different alternatives in terms of increased capacity. Alternative one is right now, you guys are at the middle of the road for what you can load your filters. You're at three gallons per minute per square foot. The standard allows you to go to four. That would probably require some pilot testing to prove to Eagle that you can still maintain the water quality at four gallons per minute per square foot. So that'd be increasing your, what goes to your filters by thirty percent. The flip side of that is as soon as, my guess is Eagle saw that you were asking to do that, they would reinforce that rule where they would enforce the four filter rule. Cause if you're looking to increase your capacity of your filters, it's most likely in response to that rule. So then they would enforce that rule. So that, that probably wouldn't be the best option. Alternative two is looking to build a fourth filter. And that has ended up being our recommendation just based on a cost standpoint. It would be a mirrored fourth filter to what you have built to the west of the plant, just an add-on addition. And the plant was set up to accommodate that. So that could be built with minimal downtime to the plant to tie that back in. Like we're not talking, you have to take the plant down for an extended period of time to build that. And that would increase, that would give you four filters and you'd be outside of that requirement. So then your filtration capacity would go to four MGD because you have four filters that can each produce one MGD. But your rated capacity is then limited by some of your other processes. Filters wouldn't be your limiting process at that point. So you'd be outside of the four filter rule, but you'd still be a three MGD plant cause your other processes can only produce three MGD. Does that make sense? Alternative three, we looked at some newer technology. We looked at vacuum filters, vacuum style membranes and also some membrane gravity systems. So that would be membranes that are, so you would, you would clean out the filter and then you would drop membrane skids inside of your filter. Alternative three is a vacuum style system. So you would put the membranes in there and you'd be literally sucking on those with a pump. So it'd be pulling water through those membranes. And you can get a very high flow rate through those. So your capacity, your filters would, can go up like three hundred percent, over three hundred percent. So your, a one MGD filter could be a three point four MG filter. So at that point, you know, one filter would get you your three MGD rated capacity. But you would have to build out two of them. Cause Eagle's gonna make you, if you still have less than three filters, so you have to assume one's out of service. So you can retrofit two cells, you can abandon one cell. And you'd be able to have a three point four MGD filtration capacity. That's, that comes at a pretty high cost, the highest cost of the alternatives. Almost double of what it would, over double of what it would be just to build an additional fourth filter. And then we looked at kind of a newer technology that hasn't been proven in, in the United States. There's a lot of installations in Canis. We met with one of the manufacturers of this technology. And it would be, instead of sucking out the water through the membranes with pumps, the gravity of the, of water, the head of the water in the tank is enough to push through the membranes. So you wouldn't have to have these additional items to, to install like in the vacuum style system. items to, to, to install like in a vacuum style system. It's a little bit cheaper since it hasn't been installed in the US, so we don't know exactly what the cost would be, but it's gonna be right around two and a half million dollars. And the problem with that is, it's, as we talked to the regulators, state regulators about this, they would consider it an unproven technology, so there'd be a lot of piloting and studies that would need to, to happen before. And really, no one kind of wants to be the guinea pig either, so that would be a disadvantage to that type of system. So, I guess that our recommendation would be the construction of a fourth gravity filter, that would get you outside of the fourth filter rule, it's your most cost-effective bet, and the plant's easily set up for that, to be able to, to construct that. So, here's all of the, the items we looked at and, and a cost associated with each one of those items. And I think initially, the thought was this would be kind of a prioritized list where the plant could start to pick off some of these items, and I, I think it just kind of, it, it was too hard to put a priority on, on all of them, so it kind of just morphed into, here's your water treatment plant improvements, here's what needs to happen at the shore well. And so, and these are conceptual costs, so there's a contingency associated with them, but these are based on kind of similar projects that we've done and similar costs that we've seen within a contingency, just because we don't know when the project would be bid or the, the bidding climate. Like, right now, sure, you know, things are really expensive, so this takes into account some of that. And so, as, as seasons change and the construction climate change, things get more expensive, less expensive, but this is a conceptual, more conservative estimate. So, you can see, most of the improvements would be at the plant at four-point-nine-five million, and then about eight hundred thousand at the shorewell pumping station, so to address all of these items, it'd be about five-point-seven-five million dollars. That includes the filter replacement, which is kind of the big chunk of, it's about a quarter of that cost is that, a construction of the fourth filter. Any questions?
So, that number includes the, the study that you did and then the, the list that the, that Gary and Tom...
Yep, so all the items that were identified as from, as part of the RFP, the Eagle deficiencies listed, and then all the items that these guys put together as deficiencies in the plant.
So, one question I have about the, the list of items that the guys at the plant put together. Out of all that list, what would you consider to be critical enough to include into a project? And what would you consider to be things that really don't need to be done? And then, what would that cost breakdown be if you'd done it?
Yeah, well, I, I didn't get into so much specifics as that, the, the more you put into a capital project, the cheaper these become, because then you get one contractor, mobilization is reduced, you know, some of the administrative costs, general conditions, that type of stuff is more efficient, so you can, you, you get a better cost the more things you, you kind of put into that list. You wanna, if you, if you kind of do a one-off and, and just hire some local contractors, it gets a little more expensive. You know, I don't know, the, we didn't really do so much of a priority because, because the, the project kind of morphed away from that. The electrical systems seems to be an issue, and then rapid mix, the coagulation, floculation, and, and loading up the filters with a higher applied turbidity, those seems to be, to me, just based on discussing with the plant, would be kind of the two major issues that they've kind of identified over and over as, as kind of the critical ones.
Mark, does this five-point-seven-five include the plant deficiencies?
Yeah, yeah, it includes everything we talked about, this is...
It does include the, the cost to increase the plant, plant capacity to four point?
It does not include that.
And that's another three-point-three?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll touch on that here in just a minute. So, yeah, and so, and this cost includes engineering, any administrative costs, construction contingencies, estimating contingencies, like I said, and since it's conceptual, we want to be more conservative, because it's always better to go down than up, especially when you're talking some state funding options, so... And we, we had a small discussion in there, a potential funding options. So, right now, you know, the kind of the main way, the main two ways to do this would be through the drinking water state revolving fund, low-interest debt for you guys to, to do capital projects. The state has passed, they call it the Clean Water Plan, where they put some additional money into some loan forgiveness. A lot of that's geared towards lead service lines and that type, asset management, getting rid of the lead, just in kind of reaction to the Flint crisis. So, there's not so much in there for, for infrastructure improvements, but there is some in there, so, and, and part of that is, as they're, they're, they're applying that debt forgiveness through the DWRF funding plan. So, any debt forgiveness as part of the Clean Water Plan would, would show up in the DWRF.
And just for reference, real quick, we're, the program right now, they're looking at, for, you know, if projects approved and everything and it meets the requirements, thirty percent or two million as a maximum loan forgiveness, you know, whichever is less. So, for in our case, especially if we do all the other three million, you know, we, we could be looking at two million dollars in loan forgiveness right off the bat from that one program.
Yep.
The, the trick with that money is of the two-hundred-and-seven, there's only about thirty-five of that that's available for those grants, so that, that, that will, there'll be some competition for it.
Right. The other one that we have experience with, we did it at Luddington, is the rural development program through the USDA. Similar, I think it's, I think it's even lower interest at the moment than DWRF.
Yeah, that, it, it all is based on your median household income in, in town, in fact, I, I checked with USDA, and I think you guys would fall in line with an intermediate loan level, it's like a one-point-seven-five percent interest rate at that level. The highest rate, if you're over the median income, their, their high threshold is like a two-point-one-two-five, I think, right now, it's, it's effectively market rate is where they set it, and they go down from there depending on household income.
And there are some grants, I think, associated with rural development, I, I think that's more random as money's available.
It is, it's tough to get, I think, unless, you know, you're quite, you're on the lower end of the median income spectrum.
Both of these plans do have some requirements in terms of materials that you can buy, how specification, specifications can be written, written to, to drive some competition to, to lower the cost. DWRF is a Davis Bacon wage requirement, so that, that increases the labor, so that can increase the cost a little bit there, too. But, just so I want to let you know, there's some requirements that they, they make you abide to when you use those two programs. And the other one would be just a bond issuance, you guys would be outside of any requirements, and I think bonds are, are pretty low right now, too, anyways, so... So, those are kind of the three main ways to, to fund a project like this. All right, so back to the capacity evaluation. So, we, we kind of added on in an appendix to the study, looking at a, a capacity expansion evaluation, so, and, and Barry can chime in a little bit, too, but with, you know, being at two MGD or one-point-nine MGD is what your, your current max day demand is, and, and operating the plant at sixteen hours a day, so you could see right there, and I kind of have it highlighted, for a three MGD rated plant, you operate for sixteen, so maximum you're producing is two MGD a day at your current schedule. So, you're pretty much right there in terms of being able to meet the, the current demand with a sixteen-hour day operating schedule, so, and you're, you're looking a little confused.
I'm just thinking as, while you're talking, that, that confuses me, that's why I...
Oh, the, the capacity?
No, here's what I was thinking, as long as your hat caught me.
Yeah.
So, if we're going sixteen hours and making two-point-oh...
Yep.
And we're using two-point-oh, basically?
Yes.
So, if we're not running at night, we're not filling those tanks at night?
Well, no, you, no, so they, so I, the way it works now is, is, so those, like a max day, that two MGD isn't coming at you constantly, so it's not like they're running all out and just to meet that. So, there's, you know, diurnal demand, you know, demand peaks in the morning, six to eight AM, goes down, goes back up when people get home, so that's kind of float, so the way the plant's operated is you run it, you meet the demands, you kind of meet those peaks, the storage helps you out, and then at the end of the day, you fill up those tanks, so then in the morning, it's there for you, and then you start the plant back up at eight and start meeting demand with storage. So, when you run for sixteen hours a day versus twenty, you're, you know, you're only operating, two-thirds of the day, you only get two-thirds, you're only up, producing two-thirds of the water that the plant can actually produce. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, I, I put together this little table just to kind of see the effects of, okay, here's, here's where you're at, if you want to continue running at sixteen, you know, say the plant is derated to two, at that point, if you want, you, you couldn't run at sixteen hours a day anymore, you'd be forced to do a 24-hour operation just because of the capacity. And then, if we move to four and you wanted to run it sixteen-hour days, then, then you're at two-point-six-seven MGD, so there's, there's, there's a lot of, there's some comfort in there, because now you're, you're quite a bit above two MGD. So, couple that with the fact that you have a large industrial user, you have some residential development that's occurring in town, and you're already right at two, so to be able to maintain a two or a, a sixteen-hour schedule with this increased development, you know, the reliability study didn't take into account your, your new industrial user and some of this additional residential and development, it just assumed kind of a flat-line demand projection. And I think, I'll let these guys speak to it, but there's been some times where they've had to operate the plant at full capacity and not seeing much headway in terms of storage, it's kind of either stayed flat or just kind of gone up. So, that kind of gets concerning as an operator because you're, you're running the plant at full out, you're barely making headway, you know, what happens if something goes down? You're, you're in trouble, you're, then you're relying strictly on storage.
And that's, that's, I have to remember, came to you guys this summer with the sprinkling restriction, that was after we had the plant running at full capacity for a short amount of time, barely making any headway trying to get the towers to, to refill with water. If one thing would have gone wrong in the system, or a filter would have went out or anything like that, you would have had a major problem. I think, you know, if it helps to kind of explain, in my book, you know, when I try to explain these things, if it's hard to understand, like the three MGD in 24 hours, two MGD in 16 hours, it, you kind of correct me if I'm wrong, but the plant's limited right now by, by the filter rate. They're rated for three gallons per minute per square feet, and by the time you do all the math on that, that's how they get to this three MGD of running at that rate. It works out to, the, the plant really at no time can make more than two thousand gallons a minute. So, you can run for sixteen hours straight at two thousand gallons a minute, and you're fine. But once you break over the two thousand gallons a minute for any point in time, you've now exceeded your filtration rate, and that's where you're gonna have a problem with, you know, possible breakthrough and just violating the, the state approval that you have for the plant. So, when you see that, you know, we, we put through, the chart came up to a one-point-eight or one-point-nine, the maximum we had this summer, it sounds like you might have one-point-one MGD left in the plant, you know, or million gallons left to go, but we did that in a sixteen-hour period, and there was a point in time where we were running at, at full rate of the plant and the towers were, were barely reacting, which even if you had more storage, that's not gonna help, I mean, in, in that case, because if the storage is there, yeah, that's gonna try to help feed the town, but you still have to replenish that water. It doesn't matter if the water's stored in the tank, if, if there's a demand in the city, the plant has to meet that demand and exceed it to refill your tower. So, if you had a lot of storage, it would help you get through the day, but the plant still won't be able to keep up with, with the demand of the town at that time. We were, we were pretty much there in the summer. I don't know how often this happened in the past, you know, this is what I experienced this year. And even judging on that, I mean, I know it's really hard, you know, I don't want to start rolling backwards into the other part of the projects, but this is where some of that flow metering comes in, and, and we're, we're hoping, you know, by the flow metering system that's there, you know, that, that we are accurate in what we're reading going through those filters, because right now, the flow meters that are there, the valve positioning and all that, you know, the, the feedback and stuff he's talking about, this all correlates into making sure that we aren't exceeding flow rates in, in the plant.
All right, see if I, if I'm gonna put this in, in a ceteris, okay? So, with our three filter system right now, when we got in the summer, it was high demand, we were just, we were just kind of getting there.
Yes.
With the increased industrial and residential that's coming, is, is occurring right now, the fourth filter allows us through the day constantly to be producing more water to go out into the system to meet that extra demand, then when we fill the tanks at night, that's just gonna start us off the next day. Too simple or just way out there?
I think that's a simple way of...
Yeah, and, and the way, the way the state kind of looks at towers, and, and it's the right way to look at it, is you want your plant to be able to meet your max day. So, you never want that mag, that's why the state, once you started getting above that eighty percent, the state started getting, getting concerned and asked you to look, look at evaluating a plant expansion, because your, your, your plant, a max day is the maximum that you see kind of averaged throughout the whole day. So, your plant should be able to maintain that. If your plant can't maintain that, then you're gonna lose ground. So, if, say you have a really dry period where you have a max day back-to-back-to-back, your plant, you're losing ground every day, so that storage isn't gonna help you. The, the way to look at storage is to be able to meet your peak and your fire flow, where that peak hour, that six to eight, that could be five million gallons, that could be six million gallons a day for that couple-hour period, so it's not, that million gallons per day is, is kind of the, a, a flow rate to, to talk, but that would be, you know, that, a six million gallons a day would be forty-two-hundred gallons per minute. The plant might see that in, in an hour's time, and that's where that storage helps you, because the storage would drop, but you'd still, over that day, it would be a maximum day of, of, of three for a...
So, if we fill both tanks, we've got nine hundred thousand gallons sitting there. If we're running with four filters and meeting the, if, if four filters, we're above what the demand we're projecting to be with what's coming down the line. So, sounds to me like four filters puts us on a day-to-day basis in operation, we're, we're, we're meeting the demand, plus we've got a little wiggle room, then we fill the tanks at night, but that, that doesn't really...
Yeah.
Do much, there's no point in building another tank for a million gallons if we're just meeting the demand through the fourth filter.
Yeah, so, so the fourth filter, so the way to think about that is if you add the four, say you add the fourth filter, so now you have four MGD of filtration capacity and don't do anything else, that doesn't give you a four MGD plant, because your other processes are limiting at that point. Does that make sense? So, you add that fourth filter, you're still a three MGD plant, because you can only, your floculation, coagulation, sedimentation, those processes are still only rated for three. Does that make sense?
But our improvements are gonna increase those ratings.
Yeah, the, the expansion improvements, these improvements we're talking about right here, the additional three, that gets you to four, that improves the other parts of the plant, so once...
The next slide.
Yeah, yep, that's the next slide.
We go to the next slide, because that's kind of a nice little slide.
Right here. So, we looked at all the processes in, in your plant and, and evaluated in terms of pumping, hydraulic capacity, process capacity for each of the processes, coagulation, floculation, sedimentation, filtration, and to, to, and we evaluated what the current capacity is, what it takes to get you to four MGD. So, here are the five improvements you have to make to get to four MGD. So, I starred two of them, because those are improvements that are, are made in the plant deficiency list. So, the construction of the fourth filter to get you outside of the fourth filter rule, and those coagulation rapid mix improvements to get away from that static mixer and add some, some mechanical inline mixers, those need to happen to get to four, but those are already gonna happen to address the deficiencies in the plant.
Those are in the five-point-seven.
Those are in the five-point-seven-five million. So, there's three additional improvements you need to make. So, right now, your low-service pumps, the firm capacity, the state sees it as you have to assume one pump is down, is offline, so you only can account for two pumps. Those are only rated for three MGD with two pumps running. So, we looked at the hydraulics, and you would need to upsize those pumps slightly to get to that, a four MGD firm capacity for the low-service pumping, that could be done just with the repl, upsizing of the pumps. So, that's not relatively a very expensive improvement. Coagulation rapid mix, that's already gonna happen, if you were to address the plant deficiencies, so that cost isn't included here, that's in the five-point-seven-five. The big cost here would be, right now, you have two floculation-sedimentation basins, each rated to one and a half million gallons per day, so by that administrative code we were talking about, the fourth filter rule, that allows, that rule also says for those processes, you can count the whole plant for the rated capacity, so that's, those plant, those two basins together are three MGD, you can't get any more out of those. So, you would need to construct a third basin, a third flock-set basin, at an additional one or one-point-five MGD to get you to that four MGD. It would be a mirrored image of the two basins you already have, you'd construct it on the other side. Now, interestingly enough, the limiting factor of the floculation-sedimentation basin is actually that floculator, those, that floculator basin, that propeller mixer, right now, that's maxed out in terms of the detention time, which is how long the water sits in that basin. Your, 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 the standard is thirty minutes, you're at like thirty-point-one minutes, so you can't push any more water through those, so we did look at just expanding those two basins to the north, and, and then adding some additional tube settlers to get you to four MGD, that way you can use the existing footprint of those tanks, just adding some additional equipment and then adding a, some, a, a tank expansion to the north, a small one. The problem is that this, there's site piping up there that feeds those tanks, so you would, it's, it'd be some very risky construction... So you would, it's, it'd be some very risky construction where you would be building on top of active mains in order to, to not have the plant shut down for months while you build those tanks. And then you would abandon those in place and then build new piping. It just, it would be, I don't know a contractor that would, that would go after that project. Because it's, that's, it'd be very risky. So I moved away from that alternative. And the, and the only viable one that doesn't require a multiple month plant shutdown, which, which you guys couldn't do, would be to construct a third one and then tie it in, which the plant is set up to do that. They, they did make provisions in the original design to tie in. So it'd be a short half a day plant shutdown to make that tie in versus many months in order to build some additional tanks and reroute site piping. So then the last one is your existing transfer pumps out of your clear well, that pump finished water out of the clear well to the ground storage tank. Those are undersized, those are at three MGD firm capacity. So you need to replace those with larger pumps to get you to that four MGD. And these are the costs for those improvements. Like I said, the vast majority of that is a, a new flock sed tank building, which would require, you know, there's, that's a lot of concrete and a lot of excavation. And then new tube settlers and mixers to go inside those tanks.
So the whole thing off the door looks like about nine, a little north of nine?
Yep, just right above nine to expand it to four. Five point seven five just to address the deficiencies in, that were identified by Eagle on the, the city.
Would the additional flocculation sedimentation basin be to the west? Is that where we?
Yep, so it would, it would really, you could envision the water plant now, the square where you have the flock sed tanks and then the filters right to the south of it. You would just build a third kind of a mirror. You'd build that fourth filter, you'd build a new flock sed tank, that wall, that corridor would get pushed west. And then everything would be connected in the basement and that mid level. So yeah, just a summary, like I said, and it was pointed out in the sanitary survey, well-maintained plant. Eagle was very complimentary of that in the survey, we agree. You guys have a good crew. It's just at this point, a lot of the equipment is aging and that, that list of deficiencies will need to be addressed at some point in the near future. And then, you know, this project could also be, is an opportunity to upgrade the plant to some more efficient processes, better technology. Like we talked about with the filters, we can upgrade that process. And you can, you can, like, we talked a little bit about backwash volume and what that takes. That, by, by improving the filter with an air scour, you would be reducing the amount of volume that you need to backwash. And then we can update the plant to current treatment standards as part of this. And then there's just the summary of the two costs.
Well, in twenty minutes.
Every, I always tell you guys, every minute over twenty, it comes off. What does, start to finish, how long does this take?
So, so from planning to construction?
No, like you go on site and you start, I, I drive by, I said, oh, they started doing something.
Yeah, for the construction part of it?
Yeah.
Probably one and a half to two years.
Yep.
Some of that's because you're limited during certain, certain parts of the year of what, you know, when the plant can be down and.
Wasn't that about a time or two, an hour or so?
What's that?
I was just talking.
Yeah, um, probably one and a half, I think, overall.
Yeah, treatment plant work always takes a little longer just because of what John was saying. You have to, you know, you're, you're maintaining operations while, so contractors in there working around a, a working drinking water plant.
That was my next question, you guys scheduled this thought also that we're never down.
Yeah.
Right.
So there's a standard of care associated with that. So, you know, contractors aren't contaminating your drinking water system and they're out of the way, things are cleared so that the plant has access. And that's all things that are specified in the project manual, that things they have to, all these things they have to maintain in terms of cleanliness and operations.
I would suspect that if this goes out, hypothetically, once, you're, you're, you guys have this deal, you're going out to bid. You're, you're getting qualified contractors that have worked in water treatment plants. We're just not hiring guys with a backhoe, right?
Right, right, you, I mean, you would, you would take bids and then there, you would, part of the bid evaluation, you would look at their qualifications. We usually interview the, like, the lowest two, make sure that they have a plan in place for how they're going to construct the thing. And, I mean, it, it doesn't stop, you know, Joe in a shovel from bidding it. But you guys will have the ability to not award them. And that, we would help you vet them out, you know?
Do you remember who built the existing plant?
Cuddy Patterson.
I would, I would imagine it was Cuddy, it was around, but as far as contractors don't.
There, there are, it's a
It's a pretty small community of contractors that do this kind of work, so they're, you know, they're pretty well known and.
So your recommendation would be to include the, the critical infrastructure, the wish list? If I'm just, and I'm just saying that, I don't mean that to be not important, plus the pump or the filter, I mean.
Yeah, so that, that is
Fifty thousand dollar
Yeah.
Probably get us through the next fifty years of water filtration.
Yeah, we would expect, I mean, you know, a lot, most of the equipment between twenty-five and forty years is usually what manufacturers say is the useful life. But we've seen, I mean, we've seen equipment, you know, forty-plus years. But, I mean, it, it would be similar to what you're experiencing now where you get to that forty, fifty year mark. And it would be time again to do something to address the aging equipment.
Do you see the need for something greater than a four million gallon per day? I mean, in, in our community?
Those guys are shaking their heads, no.
Yeah, I mean, at, at four million gallons, you can maintain that sixteen hour operation pretty comfortably. At that point, if, if you're above that two point six seven MGD max day, you know, your first would be go to a twenty-four hour operation.
And you might, as the community were to, you know, were to grow or you bring on more industrial users, then you might think about additional storage too. I mean, that's sort of all part of the, another tool in the toolbox, if you will.
Yeah, so when all these, this twenty-first century stuff comes on board, will staff need some training or they already?
The nice thing about these improvements are these are processes, I mean, they're upgraded processes, they're, they're to, you know, updating standards. And they operate more efficiently, more efficiently, the technology is better. But the pro, the, the overall process doesn't change that much. I mean, it's not, it's not anything, I mean, as part of the, when we start up this equipment, as part of the spec, these manufacturers always will, will come in, will have it in the spec. They have to spend a day training and, and do kind of an owner's training and, and kind of an O and M class for these guys to kind of, here's all, here's the checklist, here's our O and M manual, let's go through it. Here's the things you need to do on a weekly basis, annually, that type of thing. But it isn't anything outside of their wheelhouse. If we were to change to like a membrane system, which is some of those alternatives, that would be a completely different process. So there'd be a little, we'd probably want to do a little more extensive training on that just because there's a lot of different processes, cleaning the membranes, that type of thing. That's outside of what the, the staff currently does.
Kind of warranties on all this equipment?
Uh, it, it kind of goes back and forth, electrical equipment, you know, three to five, depending on what you have in the spec. Most of, you know, I think we're
Well, most of it's a year after substantial completion.
Yeah.
Standard warranty, but some of the, like a generator will come with a usually a three to five year, so.
Yeah.
But the, the overall job, the contractor, most contracts will put a year warranty on the, on the contractor and his suppliers themselves.
And usually if, if glaring issues pop up, it's usually with pretty immediate after you start up the equipment. So it would, we got to get all the kinks out in that one year and that the contractor is the one that supplies that warranty. And then manufacturers have some, you know, you can get into kind of the details like control panel stuff, you know, some of the switches and relays and that type of stuff. Those have warranties associated with them, manufacturer warranty. So if something fails three years from now, some of that stuff might have a manufacturer's warranty, so they just send a replacement. But in terms of the whole project, the contractor, it's usually a year warranty from substantial completion, which would be when you start up the equipment and have the beneficial use of, of that equipment.
I'm sure our, our water plant folks want to say a few things. I do want to make, I do want to make one point real quick just to refer counsel's perspective, you know. Some people might be wondering, you know, I look at my water bill, why is the wastewater sewer charge so much more than the water charges? And a lot of that's because over the years, there's been major investments in the sewer system, both at the plant and the, the collection sewer mains in the ground. So in the early two thousands, you did do, I think it was five point two, five point five million dollar improvement project to build those big tanks, a wastewater treatment plant. And then you, so, you know, and we're still paying that debt off. We'll pay that debt off, I think, two, three more years. Definitely see a lot of savings there in our sewer funds. Then you also did another two million dollar project in the wastewater side of things in twenty twelve, where there was a lot of lining and replacing of broken sewer mains and stuff. And all through this time, you know, these twenty years I've been going back, we haven't done anything like this in our water plant. It's, you know, we've been making these larger investments in our sewer system, but the, the water side, we haven't, we haven't been, you know, we're not dead, we haven't been dedicating this kind of resources and attention to the water side, which is why that five point seven, you know, has grown over time. You know, so that's, I just wanted to point that out that, you know, we do make investments like this, we do use these, you know, low interest financing programs before, so there's a precedence for it. This isn't new, this is, it's, it's might be new in the last few years, but it's not new for, you know, the history of our city. I just want to make that point real quick. But I've said my piece now, I'll let Barry and Tom kind of talk about, you know, they work at this plant every day and they, this, this list, you know, not the Eagle list, but their, this list came by their day-to-day experience. And I think that that is valuable that they're here to share that. And as again, that we can talk about the production capacity expansion as well, you know, as we get to it. So anyway, I'll turn it over to you two.
Um, yeah, I can just say, I'm not here to sell anything, obviously, I'm not, I don't have nothing, anything to gain from projects going forward or, or not. But just to offer some level of comfort maybe, we've done a lot of these things at, at the Marishville plant, a lot of the things you see on this project list. Major success, you know, we did flocculators, we had the same type of flocks they have, some of ours are actually not working. But we did the sludge back system, our filter media, the sand and anthracite was forty-two years old, just like theirs is now. Nut and day difference once we had the stuff installed. You know, the back system, the, the system they have now, they'll see turbidity spikes when, when that, that chain, we'd have the same problem with the chain in flight mechanism would run in the, the sedimentation basin. It would stir up some of that sludge, reintroduce it into the water to carry over to the, the rest of the plant, get into the filters. Usually they still see that spike, we don't have it anymore, anyway, we had the same problem with the back system. And as that back moves forward, it sucks that sludge off before it even touches it. So that was a major improvement, you know, the, we went from around sixty hours of runtime on our filters to a hundred easy, you know, and that's, that's a lot less backwashing they have to do. It's a lot, just more produced water versus waste. We did, you know, like generator improvements and we did our, our class study and stuff on electricity is, you know, that they're going to have to do too. But just, you know, not to throw it out there again, but the, the issue that we had January with the
Last year, yeah.
That really did catch the attention of DEQ. You know, they had to go and do water quality testing in, in the system to make sure nothing bad happened from that overfeed. Because alkalinity dropped, the pH dropped, and that's where you worry about, you know, the lead getting stirred up. Yes, and I don't want, I don't know how to say it in a politically incorrect way, yes, that was a bad thing. But on a point scale, sometimes those things actually help with, with loans, possible forgiveness on, on, on the money. But if you have a plant that's running perfectly, and you have another plant from a different city that has problems and they need to give one plant or the other the money, you know, they typically go for, and sometimes on a point scale, you have water violations, certain violations count for more, you know, like more red flags, hey, these guys need more help. When I did talk to the state, you know, and it's not what you're saying, wish list or, you know, a priority. Honestly, I, I don't, in my opinion, completely, I don't think there's an item on here that doesn't belong on here. There's really no fluff, you know, or, I mean, they're not looking for a new floor or, you know, redoing anything inside of it. The, the stuff that's here, in my opinion, you know, absolutely needs to happen. I, when I first came in to the city, within the first week or so, I actually talked to DEQ and said, hey, there's some things here that I see in the plant and the way things are going. You know, I'm a little concerned about, no offense, you know, like, you know, my license and then the way things were, just were some concerns. And they did say, you know, yeah, we know there's, there's a few problems there, we are looking at possibly in the next sanitary survey coming out, but we're going to kind of start pushing the issue. And then when the, the issue happened in January with the alum overfeed is when they, you know, according to Stephanie, nothing came out right in the app, but according to Stephanie Johnson, DEQ or Eagle, they were going to start to force a hand of capital improvement projects being created. And most likely going forward, I don't want to say how they're going to get to the point of a DCA, like a district compliance agreement. But there was enough elevated interest or attention on, you know, what was going on that, hey, you know, they're going to force capital improvement projects here. So no, it's not just a, you know, a wish list of sorts, I know, I, I know exactly.
I was just trying to apply that.
Yeah, I know, I know that, I'm just, I'm using the same term, you know, that it's, you can't think of anything better, you know, to call it either. But I know what you're saying. And it's, it was very well, I guess, emphasized from the DEQ that, you know, they're, they're going to want to see something happen. So I would think, you know, I know there's only a certain amount of money that's, that's going to come back on forgiveness. But yes, I mean, maybe a lot of it is going to be for leg rules, you know, the life service cities that need that help. But I think if you have city A and B and, you know, you have some issues already that they know about, if you have a better chance of getting some leg forgiveness. So by the time you look at that, I think that, that total overall price is probably not going to be what you're seeing now that you will actually end up paying, hopefully.
Thank you.
My big concern is a fear of failure. I mean, if, if we were derated to a, a two MGD plant, we would fail to supply the city with, with water at some point during the summer. It, it's inevitable, it will happen. We've been blessed, I mean, you can tell by the river, over the past, what, maybe five, seven years, with high water levels, wet springs, wet summers. You look back in the data, the usage has been even higher in the summer than what we have now with fewer connections. You know, all the homes and industry that's been hooked up in the past ten years has just added to our, our draw. At some point, we are not going to be able to supply it. So it seems to me to be proactive to go forward, but we have to increase the capacity of the plant. And as far as the list, I would be more than happy to, anybody that wants to come through the plant, I'll take you around and show you why this, why that. I'd be happy to do that for anybody.
Thank you.
Well, it's kind of like electricity, you walk in and flip your faucet or you flip the switch. You don't think about where your water comes from, electricity, you just know it's there when you, when you open a spigot. So this certainly opened my eyes a lot to the processes from the last year when we had the alum problem. That, that also was an awakening. So, I mean, we, we have to rely on you guys to tell us what you need to continue to offer the level of service that we have to offer to our citizens. So I don't see any reason to doubt anything you gather morning against us, or you, or Spishback.
Anybody else from council have required anything from Mark, John, Tom or Barry or?
I got a couple of questions.
Yep.
We're sitting there looking at, what, almost nine million dollars in, in improvements. Just to clear my head, what would it cost to build a new plant?
So we, we've looked at some of these, we've, we've done some studies, we did Mount Clemens and, and we're probably, depending on what type of plant, whether it's a membrane plant or a conventional plant like your guys' is, we're probably in the twenty to thirty million dollar range is, is typical of a, a brand new plant right now.
Okay. And then, okay, so we go ahead, we put this nine million dollars into this, I mean, the superintendent wants to see this thing last for forty more years. I mean, we're not fixing everything, I'm assuming, we're just fixing the wish lists here. How much more money are we going to be putting in this plant in the next forty years?
Um, tough to say.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, we're going to have, I mean, we didn't even talk about the structure of the building. I mean, what's that look like, is, is it going to hold up for forty years?
Yeah, the building, I mean, that wasn't part of our scope to evaluate that, so we didn't have like our, a structural engineer involved in, in some of that. It, you know, it appeared, you know, just based on my experience at a water plant.
I saw a lot of corrosion in the basement, I mean, you guys were pointing some stuff out, I mean.
Yeah, they're, they're probably, I mean, if you, if you were to do a, a larger capital project, you know, my recommendation would be like some of these areas where you have some concrete cracking, some areas where paint's spalling off, you know, we want to pick off some of those things. Just so you don't have, that's not an O and M cost, you guys have to keep maintaining, it can be part of, it can be capitalized in a project and all done at once. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's a water plant, you're going to have, there's going to be some O and M costs, you know, a lot, a lot of You know, a lot, a lot of plants, you know, plan to repaint every such years or, or have, you know, concrete restoration every such amount of years. And, and, and so that, you know, it's, it's tough to say how much additional money it would be over the next 40 years.
But we're not just sitting there looking and spending $9 million and we're not gonna be good for 40 years. That's not realistic.
Yeah, I mean, like, i- if you're saying, if you're asking if you spend $9 million, you don't spend another dollar for 40 years, that's probably, that is not, that's not
Yeah, that's not realistic, so. We're talking about that backwash pump and doing a secondary system.
Yeah.
And I think you guys mentioned that you've never had to shut that down or whatever. Why wouldn't we just replace that 40-year-old pump and not worry about another secondary system?
Yeah, you could do that.
You can do that, or you could buy a spare, a spare pump.
If we're sitting there working with a 40-year-old pump, that now has a tendency to break down, and we're putting in a secondary system to rack it up, why don't we just fix the original?
Yeah, so part of that study was kind of that, that secondary system to use it. I mean, there's some, there's some restrictions in terms of what you can do at the plant. That's free right now. You don't have to do anything to, to be able to utilize that ground storage tank for kind of a secondary backwash.
Okay, so that wasn't what this piping, the
Well, so that would be so you can maintain your filter operation. So if you wanted to continue to filter water and backwash a, a filter, like, say you had all your filters running, one was up for a backwash, that, that system, you could continue to filter with the other two filters and backwash that third at the same time. Right now, you can't do that. You have to stop filtration for, you know, a half hour, 45 minutes while you do this process, then start it back up. That doesn't cost you anything. The loop kind of simplifies it so you don't have to stop filtering water while you use the ground storage tank.
Question, couldn't we backwash at night when we're not filtering or?
You could, but then you'd have to man the plant.
Yeah.
Also, in the event, in the event of a breakthrough, you have to backwash now or take that filter out of service.
The, the things that make the newspaper or the news, usually it's not just one problem that happens. It's usually when three or four things stack up on each other that, that things go off the rails. And so, I mean, if you had an issue where you had your, your, your backwash pump's gonna go down at the time you've got your, your max demand in the system and you have a main break, you know what I mean? It's like, those are the things where you really run into, to the problems. But being proactive, like you're saying, is always a good thing. But, you know, even if you had a spare pump on the shelf or something that you could, okay, well, now I can, I can get that filter back up in eight hours. If I hire, find a contractor, get in here, get it swapped out or whatever.
Right.
The problem is, is if you have a couple other things compound on top of that eight hours, you know, and, and can you predict it? Not really, you know, and most of the time, it's, it's not, not a problem. But it's, I think it's, it's a strategy of doing all those things to, to keep, keep making water.
Sure.
I could just add on for the, the backwash, the, the backwash pump wasn't just put in there because the pump was older. It's just that there was no redundancy for that pump itself. Like, we have, you know, different high-service pumps and different raw, you know, raw, low-service pumps. You have three filters, you have two, everything else you have a redundancy with, you know, you have more than one pump and everywhere else except that backwash pump. So that's why it was brought up in the, in the RFP is, you know, what is an option to, if this pump ever goes down, regardless if it's brand-new, you know, lightning, you know, some kind of power spike. And so, it wasn't just because of the age, it was that there was no redundancy in the plant for that pump itself. Everything else had redundancy pretty much, except that.
Yeah, and since there's no room, I mean, there's really no room to install a second backwash pump. It's like, okay, if you're at a pinch, you could do this for, for nothing. But if you, if you wanted to have this backup as a reliability for the future moving forward, you know, you're not gonna want to shut down your whole plant every time you backwash a filter so that, that bypass pipe loop can get you to a point where you can maintain your backwash pump as your primary. If that ever goes down and you need to send it out to get rebuilt, you can get by with just the ground storage tank in the meantime.
You mentioned that the membrane system, no, we have the same as Marysville, right?
Yes, the membrane filtration.
East China uses the membrane?
Yes.
For water and wastewater?
Just water.
Just water, yeah. And you already, this is better to fix what we got.
Yeah, and Martin went to the microfiltration and they had an issue with a cleaning part. So we, the main provider, it comes all the way from Australia. So they actually went to Micro and then went away from Micro and went back to conventional.
And there's, there's a lot of kind of things you need to, to add with, and increases kind of the complexity of that process quite a bit. At New Baltimore, we did a, a vacuum membrane system. And you're installing, and you have multiple chem feed systems for a clean-in place because those, those, that, those membranes will build up scale. So you have to clean kind of an acid wash, so you have citric acid, you'd have probably a caustic, you'd have a lot of different types of chemical feed systems to be able to maintain that operation. And then multiple pumping systems for recycle, pump to waste, vacuum pumps to, for your effluent. So it's just, it's, it's a little bit more complex.
And the backwash, like on Micro, goes from hours to minutes. So you're, you're backwashing every, so I believe 30 to 40 minutes, 30 to 40 minutes, you go back.
So you weigh both and that's just, the recommendation is to go proceed with overtime?
You just don't need all the upstream, you know, the settling basin, the all, you still need
It'd be, it'd be one thing if we can get rid of all the other processes and just have some membranes there and, and pump it through the membranes, but membranes like to see a consistent effluent. So keeping that pretreatment, that floculation, sedimentation would still be necessary. So those would still have to be maintained.
Why does it cost so much to replace the roof? You're almost a quarter million dollars.
So that is just based on, so we did a, a couple of big roofs for the city of Grand Rapids. And, you know, we, we took kind of a square foot cost because it's a smaller roof. You don't get that economy of scale. So we, you know, up that cost based on that. And then, like I said, we, you know, mo- all of these things are kind of like a blank 35% across the board for estimating contingencies, engineering, that type of thing. So it's a, it's a, it's a conservative cost, no doubt. But that's, you know, that, for, on a conceptual basis, that's just kind of how we come up with our cost estimate. But, I mean, it would likely be cheaper.
I would think so, huh?
Yeah, depending on, you know, the bidding climate and, and whatnot, and who's got work and who doesn't have work, it, it fluctuates.
Right.
What else? One other thing, it seems to me, I don't know, my memory's not that good. But when we walked through the plant, and I remember being in the control room, that big control panel there, there was issues. Is that gonna be totally replaced? I know there was issues of, some people like it one way, some people like it another way. Say it again.
That's a SCADA system. That's, that's part of this. Would be replaced.
Okay. And that, is that where we have the automation with the mixing valves and stuff, or is that somewhere else?
It controls everything, yes.
Okay.
So the rest of this list here, that fluctuating is the roof with price?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know.
You said what, maybe 35%?
Yeah, so the, these would be a conservative estimate. And since we're on a conceptual basis, we're talking about project funding. You know, we, we, we want to be able to procure the amount of money we would need, you know, just, you know, on what it could
So this could cost 2.7 million dollars less than what you're saying?
No, because some of this
I mean, that's 35% of $9 million?
Like, a roof is probably a commodity issue, so that, you know, that's gonna bid a lot lower. But some of this other stuff would be more expensive construction. And so just to keep that kind of even across the board, we kind of had to pick a number. So we wouldn't, yeah, yeah, the, the roof is an example where you'd expect the bid price to come in quite, quite a bit below because there are so many guys that could do, you know, companies that could do a roof system for you. You'd get a lot more competition than you would for like the SCADA.
Yeah, sure.
You'd expect that's gonna be a lot higher unit value. So because it's hard on a, on a big, large-scale estimating, you know, to, to get that finesse, I guess, if you will, and you have to kind of pick a number across the board and carry it all the way through.
And most of these process-type things, I mean, we've done quite a few of these projects, similar-type projects. So we look at old project estimates, similar plants that we've done, and look at those where those bids came in, adjust it for today's dollars. And then, like I said, we, we're, we're more conservative and add some contingencies just because, you know, when, depending on when this thing gets bid, contractors might get busy. We're seeing a lot, you know, right now, most of our treatment plant projects are coming in quite a bit higher than what our estimates are. Well, not quite a bit, but we've had to adjust our estimates higher than what we typically do because contractors are busy. They don't, nobody gets
You did that with these, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
The, the goal is that the cost could be less than this number.
Yeah.
But it's, but it's still, it's still not guaranteed.
Yeah, all right. And I'll also point out that, you know, part of that 35% is paying, you know, an engineer to actually design all of this, bid it, and then, you know, administer it, make sure it's done right. It's not all just a construction contingency, but there's, there's another cost to this besides the construction, and that's the engineering, just like with AW, we gotta pay him, you know.
$200,000 for a roof is crazy. Evil with engineering.
You just don't like that roof.
I don't like that roof. I have one more question. Aside from structural, structural problems with the building, what percentage of the water plant system do you think this is taking care of?
What do you mean? The, like, what percentage?
What percentage are we updating of all the systems?
The guts.
Yeah.
The stuff.
I mean, we're, it's
I mean, is it like 50%, 75%?
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not touching the piping very much. I mean, that's, you know, we're, we're modifying the piping to, to fit these things. But, I mean, most of your major processes here are being replaced or improved. Like, you know, we're not touching the high-service pumps, that, that's not part of it. But, you know, the expansion, we're touching the low-service pumps, we're, we're into the transfer pumps, all of the electrical gear getting replaced, SCADA.
I think it's pretty safe to say that, from when the water gets out of the river before it goes into the tower, everything it passes through essentially, and everything that controls those processes is getting
Yeah.
taken care of.
Yeah, except for, yeah.
Minus the piping, pretty much everything. Except for veins themselves.
The hardware, yeah.
Yeah.
But the heart is, the heart, the brain, you know, the liver, all that is, you know, getting looked at.
That's all I have. Thank you.
On the preliminary cost estimate, it lists for the standby January, $350,000. That is including the addition on the building.
Correct. So between that one and the C where it has the sodium hypochlorite storage improvements, the 185, those two together include the footprint of building needed to, to house those.
Yeah. And that would be built, I think I read 12 by 14 structure add-on, is that approximately what it was?
Yeah, I think that's what we ended up on. It's still, I mean, we, we don't need much room for the chem feed system because we're only storing drums. And then our electrical engineer looked at, you know, kind of what we needed. Because we didn't want to, obviously, being where it is, we didn't want to add on this giant building addition.
Thinking to the east on that structure of, of that addition?
Yeah, I think the, they, I, I think it labeled it as east maybe. I think more realistically would be to the south.
And I can save you $23,000 because if we do that, you don't need the diesel fuel tank.
Yeah, that one would go away.
And we don't have Tom jump-starting it in the middle of the night, supplier sitting with water.
So spend $500.
So Mark, walk me through this. And I know we're not here to this point yet, but eventually we probably will get there. So you, you have a number, we put it out to bid, Warren applies to the state, whoever, try to get some money. And the bid comes in at a number. Does the state determine how much they're gonna give us based on what the bid is? Or they don't care what the bid is, they've got a number, where's, how's it go like that?
As far as possible principal forgiveness?
Yeah. I, I would also talk on just, if we tell the state, we need five, let's say, we tell the state we need nine and we end up needing 11, what does the state, you know, what, what happens in that situation? And you can address the principal forgiveness too, but I think the heart of your question is, what if it's more and we've only asked for nine and, you know, we need more?
They'll, it, it, for the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, it starts with a, a report and that needs to be submitted by July 1, I think, for water. They only do that once per year for that program, for the revolving fund. And then they go through, Barry was talking about a scoring system. So they'll, they take the report, including how much is, is called out in there. And they just place a score on it, and then they, they rank all the reports they get that, that time period. And then around September, October, they put out a list. And the, the ones with the highest points are on the top. So they mean, if the state's gonna get appropriated so much money from the federal government for this program to loan. And then they'll just go one by one, they'll check them off. And when they get to the bottom of the, when the money runs out, then who's ever below the line wouldn't get funded this time in this cycle. And then what happens is if you, if you make the cut for the loan money, then you basically get into a, a schedule, a loan schedule. So you'll say, all right, well, I got, I got on the list in October. It's gonna take, you know, a year to do the design, another month or so to do the bidding. They're gonna have, there's some other, there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with either that program or USDA. But basically, you don't lock in until you get the bids in hand. So if, if it comes in higher, it comes in higher. And, and really, the drinking water, any of the SRF money is, it's, it's the government giving, giving you a loan, selling you a bond that nobody else will buy because the interest rates are, are not good. So it's a, that's kind of how they do it. You, you're basically closing a bond with the state. And then once, once that money is, once you have your bid, there's a, you know, a process where you get your bond closing, and it'll be for whatever the bid is. Plus, then they'll add in a percent for construction contingency. That might be 5 to 7% for, you know, things, changes happen during construction too. And then that's the amount that you would close the bond for. So that's how that would work. So you're not locked in until you have bids in hand. And that, and it's the same way with USDA. But it's, it's, it's the same kind of contingency program and stuff. But as you go through design, those estimates get refined a little bit more. We'll be able to zero in on the roof cost a little bit more at that time and those kinds of things. Hopefully pare that down and get it, get it close, right? We don't want to be, we don't want the low, the low number on bid day. But you go through that, that process, close your bond, get your contingency, and then that's, basically, that's the money you agree to, to borrow. And that's what sets it, so.
And I think I got a few comments now. So first, I'd like to say, all those capital improvements I talked about that we've done over the years with Sewer Fund, we've used this state revolving fund program for. So we've already in the past been able to score and get the funding for the projects when we needed to do them. What this looks like right now, though, for this program, so on January 31st, there was a deadline letter of intent to apply. I informed you in my email that I did send the letter in. I put the full dollar on there just because I didn't know, you know, like, I'm gonna, if you don't ask for it now, you know, you can't get it later. So I did send that in. So in the next 14 days, they're reviewing the applications. And I know they're looking at it because I got a, some random email about one of the pages today from one of the guys there at the state who reviews these things. But right now, basically, the next step is to have an engineering study that basically explains, takes what we did here, this was, you know, this, this is a, you know, fantastic study to really, you know, be our map for what we've done. But in terms of what you need to get these grants, you know, it has to, you know, the engineer would have to say, here's my improvements, here's why I'm recommending them, here's why they're the only, here's why there's no other better, you know, cheaper or more expensive way of doing it. And again, it's all required by just how this money program works. So there would have to be very quickly authorization from council to have the engineer, I'll be recommending Fishback, to actually prepare all these other documents so we can meet our, I think it's July 1 for Drinking Water this year?
Yeah, you have probably hearing dates and all that.
Yeah.
And, mm-hmm.
Yeah. So that like, so that would have to start, you know, for this, for that funding source, we'd have to authorize that work. You know, they can't give us a proposal next, for a meeting next Monday, I don't think. But it would be March 1st, then I'd be, you know, I'd be coming and maybe that might even be too, you know, can you crank it up if I give you the go-ahead March 1st, essentially?
Yeah, I'm sure we can, yeah. Yeah, so you have to get the draft report to you guys, then you have to put it on display for 30 days, and then you have to pass a resolution, and there, there are some other steps, so that.
Which is what you've done with these other projects, you know, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, same process, you know?
Yeah.
Public notice and everything.
There is one thing too, and I just, and I don't know if you and Tim talked about this, Warren, but it's this idea of whether expansion would be covered under the DWRF money. So that would be something you'd want to talk with them about.
Yeah, and that's something we plan on talking when we have these, these initial meetings with them, is we want to raise the issue. You know, we have, you know, 5.75, yeah, that's, you know, 100%. You know, we have, you know, 5.75, yeah, that's, you know, 100%. You know, we don't think there's any issues there with, you know, the state loaning us money for that. It's, you know, the unknown is the production capacity, I'm taking it from the three to a four. So, again, I don't have an answer today if that's going to be viewed unfavorably or not. You know, I'm fairly confident that, you know, we'll give it our, you know, give it our best effort, you know, Fishback ourselves, you know, to sell, this is why we, you know, we're trying to be compliant with all this stuff and we're trying to, you know, building this, you know, extra sedimentation, flocculation basin really is needed to tie all the other stuff in together. And again, it may be perceived as favorable or maybe they'll say, you know, if they could say, we'll only loan you 5.75 right now, so then, well, you know, is there other ways to get, if council wanted to pursue the 3.3, you know, absolutely, it's just, you know, there is an unknown and it's good that was brought up now because, again, I don't know how that's going to end, but, you know, I kind of view it as, you know, a team effort to try and, you know, communicate effectively with the Eagle to say, these, this is what we're doing and why, and, you know, we're actively having discussions on, how do you sell that to them, you know, right now? And then, the only other thing I'd add, just kind of on, you know, what's, you know, and also simultaneously, while this is going on, you know, you know, I'll be engaging the services of, you know, rates, you know, water and sewer rate people, financial planners, you know, bond consultants, financial advisors, you know, we can have them, you know, do a lot of this analysis for us so we can figure out, you know, what kind of, you know, debt payment we'll be, would be looking at, you know, 20-year, 30-year, 40-year, you know, loan, you know, with or without certain types of principal forgiveness. Again, I think, you know, just some things to point out is, again, we do have, I'm not saying we have to do it this way, but with a significant amount of our sewer debt coming off in the next two, three years, you know, that's a few hundred thousand dollars of, you know, freed-up funds, so you could, you know, in theory, one of the things I would look at is, do you adjust sewer rates down while adjusting, you know, water rates up simultaneously? So there's no perceived, you know, difference in the bill, but we'd be able to, you know, start paying for those water debt service payments. Additionally, I know some of this work is, and one of the reasons why I invited a friend from the township here tonight is, I believe some of these improvements under our agreement with the township, you know, they participate in these costs with us, so, you know, that can help get the costs down with principal forgiveness. And another thing just to point out too is, you know, if Magna and all the new homes come on board and they're using 100,000 gallons more of water a day, if I'm selling 100,000 gallons of water or more a day, that's significant revenue that, you know, we don't have before that could be, could, again, go towards a debt payment source of some kind. So again, it's, there's a lot of work that still has to be done and is coming, but, you know, tonight it was, here's the results, here's the direction we'd like to go, and give the council the opportunity to, you know, to think and ask questions on it.
What else?
I got one more. What is the township's percentage of that?
So I need, so when I read the agreement, I believe the language says something about proportionate share. I got to work with the attorney, with the township, you know, really understand that definition. My gut is telling me that, you know, you look at proportionate share, the township's using 25% of all the water we produce at our plant. So I'm thinking that the township's share of that, you know, would, or of a debt service payment would be 25%. You know, I think that would, I think that sounds pretty fair and, you know, is keeping in line with the intention of that contract, but there is a question that will require a little bit more, you know, review to make sure we have the correct understanding. And again, there's a reason why I want to invite Mike here from the township today so we can start getting them involved, and if we have to have some kind of joint meeting to just kind of talk about the direction, you know, that might be, might be something to do in the future.
Mike, you're here, were you involved in any of the increase or any of the project cost for Marysville? Because I know you buy water from Marysville. You don't buy any water from Marysville?
No. No, not now, no, Marysville, so everything's off with the service.
So we would need to maintain some type of competitive balance to keep that business, right? I would suspect, I mean, I'm looking at you as a.
Yeah, I operate both plants, so.
Well, a little bit.
You know what, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't, I don't really foresee Marysville looking at that. I think it'd be my impression of our city administration, they're more interested in tax revenue than they are trying to gain just like a lot of revenue.
Yeah.
And then using our capacity on something that doesn't give us tax revenue at the same time.
Yeah. They can't get a new industrial user come to their place if all their excess capacity is.
You should hear that from me.
Off the record.
Yeah. Rate increases are never a popular discussion to have with the public, so I just want to make sure that we're got in our eyes and prospect.
Yeah, again, there's a lot to analyze with that, so, you know, I think an increase is obviously likely, but at the end of the day, maybe it won't be as, you know, it might be pretty stomachful, you know, if that's a word.
Sure, it is, huh? You hear some of the words these guys are using, you can use that word.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm going to ask, is there any public comment? We have a couple of people in the public here tonight.
Okay.
Barry, Tom, anything?
I think I'm good.
Okay, so what I plan on doing is, because I have applied for these loans now, is to bring a proposal to you to prepare, you know, the necessary materials, you know, to secure that funding, you know, by the engineer. So again, I won't have that likely next Monday at all for you, but the plan is to bring that before this council in March so we can, and at that point, I hope to have